Great. Well, good morning, Board. Thank you so much for our very productive meeting yesterday and look forward to the same today. So, Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams here. Holly Bloodworth. Jamie Bowling.
Jamie Bowling here.
Patrice McCrery.
Here.
Julie Pyle.
Here.
Randy Poe.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trimble.
Here.
Diane Woods.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Alyssa Riley.
Here.
RJ Osborne.
Here.
Secretary Link. President Thompson. Okay, Chair, you do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Well, the next item on our agenda is absolutely my favorite. It's good news, sharing good news. And so, we're going to call on Randy, Lee, Joanne, and who's going to do?
Vice Chair Young, would you be willing to rephrase?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. Thank you. So, we'll call on Randy first.
Great. Awesome. I get the pleasure to announce two educators who received a 25,000 McMillan Educator Award. The first one is Shane Baker, a third-grade teacher at Jennings Creek Elementary School in Warren County, was celebrated on October 26th. Baker was presented with the award in a surprise ceremony at his school that included students, faculty, and district and community leaders. As an ed tech ambassador for the school district, Baker effectively incorporates technology into his project-based learning curriculum, adjusting for each student's unique needs throughout the school year. The second grade educator is Jacob Ball, a sixth through 12th grade agricultural teacher at Carter-Woodsen Elementary in Fayette County. He was celebrated on October 27th, and he became the latest Kentucky educator to receive the McMillan Family Education Award. Ball, who grew up on his family's small farm in Nelson County, said he was shocked to hear his name called during an assembly that included his teaching colleagues and the entire student body. Last year, his students participated in 140 agricultural products across the state, logging over 3,000 hours of real-world experience that culminated in the trip of a lifetime for nine students who traveled to Ireland for the Agricultural in Ireland Summer Tour. The award included $25,000 unrestricted cash prize for each one of them. The prestigious award hailed as the Oscars of Teaching, was presented by the interim Kentucky Commissioner, Robin Fields-Kenny, Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman, and the McMillan Educator Award Senior Vice President Jane Folling. This year, this school year, up to 75% recipients across the country will be honored and celebrated as part of the McMillan Family Foundation journey to the 3,000th McMillan Educator. Congratulations to Shane Baker and Jacob Ball. Let's give them a round of applause.
So, Patrice, you were in Warren County for that presentation?
I was not. I was in Cal- with us.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
I was from Cali.
Well, it's really quite wonderful seeing the teachers surprised and the students. And that milk and 25,000 is really quite a prize.
Said that Jacob Ball was a student of mine at UK in the principal program, and he really is exceptional.
Quite wonderful. Dr. Todd?
I have the pleasure of announcing another person who made Kentucky stand out nationally. Louisville's school principal earned the 2023 Carol H. Bell Award for Outstanding School Leadership. Amy Sample, who's the principal at St. X in Louisville, was one of nine school leaders across the country to win that award. All nine honorees were invited to meet together at the 2023 Cohort of the National Blue Ribbon Schools Conference on November 16th. The U.S. Department of Education, together with the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the Association of Middle-Level Education, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, present the Bell Awards. The principals of national blue ribbon schools for their outstanding work and the vital role they play in guiding their students and schools to excellence frequently under very challenging circumstances. So, once again, one out of nine in the country is pretty outstanding, and we want to congratulate Amy Sample for that recognition.
Lovely. Thank you. Joanne?
The Kentucky Innovative Learning Network selected 10 educators for its 2023-2024 Innovative Teacher Fellowship Program. Teachers were selected from a pool of applicants from across the state who are a part of Kentucky ILN member districts. Kentucky ILN is a partnership between local school districts and KDE, providing a shared professional learning space for education leaders. Educators in this cohort will craft innovative experiences that connect to the three big ideas of the United We Learn vision: creating vibrant learning experiences, accelerating innovation, and building a bold new future with communities. The 2023-2024 Innovative Teacher Fellowship Cohort members are: Emily Anderson, Owensboro Middle School; Tiffany Boggs, Mckell Elementary, Greenup County; Jennifer Brown, Menifee Central, Menifee County; Elise Carter, Highlands High School, Fort Thomas Independent; Brooke Kaufman, Shelby County East Middle School; Leslie Dillon, Valley Shannon Middle School, Boone County; Allison George, Picadome Elementary, Fayette County; Katie Johnson, Shelby County High School; Nikki Jolly, Metcalf County Middle School; and Toby Sadler, Conright Elementary School in Clark County. Congratulations to all of them.
One of the things that is real clear as we recognize all of this good news is that good news is happening all over the state. And I have to tell you, we've got to cherish these significant examples of excellence and professionalism and students striving because it's going to give us the energy we need to go forward. So, Dr. Yan, would you?
Do I have Shelby County or Go Teach?
You have Go Teach.
Okay. Go Teach Kentucky. All right. Also, a list of names to share more exciting appointments. This is KDE's 21 Go Teach KY ambassadors for 2023-24. This is a new class for Go Teach KY, and the mission of Go Teach KY is to ensure that all students across the Commonwealth have equitable access to effective teachers. So, big, broad goal of the work. Go Teach KY seeks to recruit the next generation of teachers in Kentucky, helping remedy the critical teacher shortage that affects every state in the U.S. Ambassadors were selected from a pool of applicants from across Kentucky who answered the call for educators interested in supporting the initiative and helping promote the teaching profession. We heard Alyssa talk about that some yesterday. So, our new Go Teach KY ambassadors are: Mackenzie Pettis Adams from Rockfield Elementary School, Warren County; Robin Ballinger, Chinnewith Elementary School, Jefferson County; Stephen Daniel Beams, Taylor County Middle School; Janelle Brodjakowski, Fallsburg Elementary School, Lawrence County; Heather Carden, Freedom Elementary School, Christian County; Deanna Collins, Johnson Central High School, Johnson County; Kimberly Cook, Spencer County High School; Rhonda Cox, Spencer County Middle School; Latanza Garvin, Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, Fayette County; Erin Grace, Rockcastle County High School; Katie Hale, Ponderosa Elementary School, Boyd County; Heather Hayden, Chinnewith Elementary School, Jefferson County; Melissa Ann Hopkins, Cedar Grove Elementary School, Bullitt County; Dylan Howard, Paducah Middle School, Paducah Independent; Kalen Knight, Randall K. Cooper High School, Boone County, we always nod at Randy, and Julie; Bree Massey, Frederick Douglas High School, Fayette County; Elizabeth Minix, Breathitt County High School, excuse me, Breathitt County School District; Laura Pratt, Paducah Head Start, Paducah Independent; Bridget Powell, Central Elementary School, Marshall County; Stacy R. Stockdale, Owensboro Innovation Academy, Owensboro Independent; and Becky Wright, County High School.
My former student.
My former block student.
Really?
We're sending them out.
Which one was that?
Mackenzie.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Congratulations to these 21 Kentucky educators, and thanks so much for the interpreters who handle these names so well.
Great finger spelling.
Impressive.
Well, thank you. That is amazing and very important work. And Steve, you're going to share a language of Spanish immersion example with us.
My honor to do that. Educators and staff from Shelby County were recognized on November 8th for completion of an eight-week base language Spanish immersion program, an initiative between KDE and the Kentucky Education Association. This online program requires participants to spend two hours a day, five days a week, learning and developing their Spanish-speaking skills. Program which uses an evidence-based model was taught by native Spanish speakers who live in Latin American countries. The end goal was that participants would be able to hold a 30-minute casual conversation in Spanish upon completion of this course. First KDE baseline cohort was in 2020, and since then, KDE has held four cohorts totaling more than 200 educators at every level, from bus drivers to central office staff. These cohort cohorts find new ways to support schools with high English learner populations, specifically those identified as targeted support and improvement schools. So, congratulations to Shelby County for this wonderful program.
This item, this next item on our agenda is one where we give board members an opportunity to raise issues not included on the agenda, or raise issues of our items on the agenda for which clarification might be sought, a referral to a committee, scheduling of future board meetings, and any other ideas that you have that would be helpful to share with board members. So, we're going to open board sharing at this time, and please indicate your interest. Yes, Alyssa, thank you.
I just wanted to share, if people aren't aware, it's Kentucky Youth Assembly season in Louisville and Frankfurt. So, if you're unaware, it's middle school and high school students that participate in a mock legislature and go through the process. And I was fortunate enough to go with my son in the middle of November. So, shout out to Aiden, who wrote a bill and it got passed and signed and everything. But as I was flipping through the bill book, there were a lot of bills that had to do with education in Kentucky. We had assessment, we had medical training of teachers, social and emotional health. And so, I think it's interesting because the issues that we talk about at this table and the, you know, what comes to us from, you know, KDE are things that our students are talking about too. So, I think it's really important that we consider our student voices because they are feeling it too and they are seeing, and they're the next leader. So, I think it was really interesting to see that connection. So, congratulations to all of them there. It's awesome. If you ever have the chance to go, they're rock stars, so for sure.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Patrice.
I had two grandsons there presenting bills, so that did well. The, in addition to the Grek Ninja Simathon that I attended, I wanted to give a great big shout out to our regional cooperatives because of the support that they're giving to our schools is phenomenal. And they're right there. And in this case, our special needs teachers just sing their praises for how much they support them. It's just amazing. I'm so impressed. But I also want to mention, I went to the Louis B. Nine Kentucky Teacher Hall of Fame Ceremony. And I would love, Meredith, perhaps our next meeting, we could do that as a share of good news so that we can highlight the four individuals who were inducted this round. Two are deceased. The other two, I had the good fortune and opportunity to visit with on site. Spectacular individuals. Thank you. Thank you, Patrice.
Yes. I have two quick. I was able to attend the base language ceremony as a former Spanish teacher. I said yes to that invitation when we received the email, and it was delightful to go around the table and hear those teachers who had been online 30 minutes a day for six weeks, sometimes before school, 6:00 a.m., with a colleague in a Latin American country speaking Spanish. And the immersion model, pardon me, the immersion model that they experienced really paid dividends. They were chatting around in Spanish that day. And I just loved it as an example of support across the Kentucky Education Association and our department staff, and then the team under Dr. Sally Sugg at Shelby County, and really paying attention to ways that we can make our schools more inviting for our Hispanic students, our Spanish-speaking students in our communities. And then Julie and Patrice and Meredith and I and other members of the team were able to join, to go to the NASB Annual Conference in San Diego in late October after our last board meeting. And we were able to present on the Kentucky Portrait of Learner Model. We got a lot of good feedback, a lot of interest in the session. And the major session presenters were outstanding. Lee, we heard from the CEO of Code.org. Hadi is his first name, and I'm blanking on his last name right this minute, but talked to us a lot about artificial intelligence, which I mentioned in our State Schools Committee yesterday, and the importance of thinking about coding, computer science, and then across the curriculum about the implications of artificial intelligence. He said something that really hung with me, that students in the next five years will need to be leaving high school with transcripts that note English Language Arts in an artificial intelligence environment, math and AI, science and AI, that the workforce is tooling up so dramatically quickly around the need for artificial intelligence expertise that it's going to be a game changer for not just CTE, but I think across the curriculum in P-12 sooner rather than later. We heard from the National Teacher of the Year, and then we heard from Linda Darling-Hammon, who just said the pearls of wisdom that dropped out of her mouth. And so, it was really an excellent conference. Much appreciation to the board for letting us attend, and I'm still thinking about things that we learned and the implications that they hold for our work here in Kentucky.
Thank you so much. It's a great update, and that is a great conference, very substantive one. So, please take note, that opportunity will present itself annually, and we want to see as many board members as possible participate.
And on a break, we will tell you about the way that we clawed our way home from Detroit at midnight. Memories.
It was not pretty.
Thanks to Meredith's husband.
Todd and Lindsay were able to join. They do a lot of important state board lawyer work at that conference as well.
Julie?
So, Monday, I had the pleasure of, it was a whole collaboration effort for schools in Boone County and Northern Kentucky University. We had the former chair of the FDIC, Sheila Bear,
Oh, yeah.
who was appointed to the FDIC under George W. Bush. Amazing career that she's had. She's now has become a children's book author around financial literacy and explaining really difficult topics like compound interest, predatory lending, in a way that children can understand. The books are gorgeous, illustrated. So, the Rotary Club of Florence, our foundation, donated $1,000. Fidelity made donations. She visited three schools, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and then spent the night at a financial math literacy night at Stevens Elementary. Every child at all three of those schools received one of her books. It was very, it was very cute. She did a book reading with the kids and was even autographing the books for all the kids at the school. So, the power of community collaboration around our schools and kids is very, very valuable.
Excellent. In that, I was remiss to not mention that our own Julie Pyle was appointed to the NASB Executive Governing Board representing new members. So, she'll be serving in that capacity for at least the next two years.
Just one year.
Oh, one year on the executive board and having a lot of input about the future work of NASB, especially as it relates to the needs of new members. So, congratulations, Alyssa.
NASB is a great resource for all of us, so please take advantage of those services. Anyone else? Well, I'm going to close board sharing as a segue to our next agenda item, the Commissioner's Search update. I was, this was right before Thanksgiving, and I was just in the kitchen doing what you do right before Thanksgiving, right? I think actually I was cleaning greens. And I got the typical notice on my cell phone that I had a new text message. And, you know, I just dried my hands and looked at it. It was from Felicia Smith, former KDE Associate Commissioner. And she was at a conference in Atlanta once sponsored by the Southern Education Foundation on student voice. And she sent me a picture of this young Kentucky student, a female, that she met at this conference. And she said, the student had said in a presentation that her ambition was to become Commissioner of Education.
Oh, wow.
I literally sat down. It was just so amazing that students are hearing, that they know about the education that impacts them as learners, as future in our economy, in our government, and public service. It is just, I mean, I was just really stunned. And it was not so bad. So, our, you know. This student voice on our board has just opened us to so much enthusiasm and support for the wisdom that comes from that perspective. And this was, this message was confirmation that voice is just incredibly important to us. And it is not only full of wisdom, it's full of promise. And so, we'll go now into the issue of our Commissioner's Search and give you an update. We have folks joining us. So, just one second. Before we introduce our guest on this item, again, we want to thank Steve and Julie and Alyssa for their service on the evaluation committee that resulted in the selection of Vendor A, McPherson and Jacobson. Somebody need to go on mute, I think. Thank you. McPherson and Jacobson LLC to serve as the firm to coordinate the search for our next permanent Commissioner. Today, we want to welcome Steve Joel and his team. Dr. Joel, would you please introduce other members of your team who will join us?
It says on my screen I'm being muted by somebody there. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. Morning, everyone. Love the conversation about students and the alignment with your next Commissioner of Education. So, that's the work that we do. My name is Steve Joel. I've been with McPherson and Jacobson for more than two decades. I've been involved in all of the state superintendent searches, most recently Mississippi, the state of Kansas, excuse me, the state of Nebraska. 37 years as a superintendent of schools. I like to say I'm a recovering superintendent. Last 12 were in Lincoln, Nebraska. I've been retired and a full-time consultant now for about a year and a half. I can't tell you how excited we are to work with you on this most important task. And we believe that you've got something based on our research. And of course, we want to do a lot more deeper research, but we believe that what you're offering in the state of Kentucky is pretty exciting for your next superintendent. And I will tell you that there is quite a bit of interest in the position already. So, it's exciting to be partnered with you and to try to bring about the most positive outcome that we can. I've got two colleagues that, we're going to, we have a team of four. That's going to be, we'll be working, we'll all be working together on this search. And then I've got two colleagues that are on right now, and I'm going to ask Dr. Hutto to introduce them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Great to be with you this morning. I too want to commend you for your good news. I've been in your board meeting since it started. You know, it's so important to intentionally try to come up with good news. There's always some news out there that's not so good, but you did a great job with that, with good news. It sounds like you have a lot, a lot of positive things going on there. My name is James Hutto, and I'm a retired superintendent also. I followed the usual path from teacher to principal to superintendent. And I retired in '09, 2009, with over 42 years in retirement system in Mississippi. And I started working with McPherson and Jacobson shortly after that. I actually have a son and his wife and two children living in Elizabeth Town. So, have a little bit of a connection to Kentucky. So, we're delighted to be with you, and we promise and commit to you that we're going to do our very best to help you in this most important job that you have in front of you.
Thank you.
Dr. Marcus?
Hello, everyone. I'm so excited to be here and to be part of this work. I'm Kimberly Marcus. I am a lifetime educator, retired two years ago. I too served from teacher, first started as a first-grade teacher all the way up to serving as New Jersey's Commissioner or Secretary of Education, humbled to serve our million-plus students in that capacity for six years. I served as Assistant Commissioner and then our Commissioner. And it's just truly a privilege to be on this work. And I'm glad I joined early and got to listen to some of your conversation. I was really touched to hear you all sharing your different professional growth spaces that you've been in and the wisdom that you're receiving from those spaces that helps to nourish you. But then I was really excited to hear your conversation about student voice. That has been my main platform for the past 10 to 12 years. I am a mom. My oldest son is a teacher. My younger son is finishing up college. But I really believe that we do a lot of talking about education as adults and how students like to learn and how they need to learn, and rarely do we include them in that conversation. I also think they have incredibly powerful voices to help us with change moving forward in our world. So, I was really glad to hear that, and I loved that you shared, not only does the student voice have wisdom, but they hold promise. And I too believe that and think that this is going to be an incredible journey, and I look forward to serving you on this journey to help you find your next leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Marcus. And Dr. Hamilton, if you would introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Hamilton. And again, I enjoyed listening to the kudos that you gave out to your constituents and your community. I've been in education for 32 years. I retired as an area superintendent five years ago. I've been with McPherson and Jacobson for five years. And I also work at the Georgia Department of Education in the School Improvement Division. So, I understand the work that you guys have ahead of you. And again, we're excited to be part of your team to help you find that Commissioner that will continue the excellent work that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Well, those are our introductions. Been working with Dr. Brewer on just some concept topics to discuss if there's time. Maybe at this point, open it up for questions, or, you know, I'll defer. And if you'd like me to cover some of the discussion points, I'd be happy to. We have a fairly bold timeline because of my understanding, speaking with Dr. Brewer, is that we, just like in Mississippi, we have to contend with Senate confirmation or a assembly confirmation of this particular candidate. So, we want to give ourselves quite a bit of lead time. But this is a good time to begin a search right now, particularly at the state level. So, let me stop there and ask if there's any particular protocol you want to follow or any questions that you might have at this point.
Dr. Joel, it's good to meet you and your very impressive team. A lot of experience and a lot of knowledge there. A lot of experience and a lot of knowledge there. You know that we are replacing a beloved Commissioner that many of us participated in selecting and was sorry to see him leave our state, but we also have a lot of expectations in those, in our constituents and the staff here at KDE and the board that we've tried to assemble and organize as a means of informing at least the initial consideration of this call. And so, you know, we're here to work with you very closely as we complete this search. We, I have heard great promise, but also a little skepticism regarding the timeline. You sound, you sound very optimistic that this is a good time for a search. So, if you want to say another word or two about that, it might be encouraging to us.
Sure. Well, first of all, you're always going to have interest within your state, right? This is something that some superintendents who you may or may not even know about would aspire to this kind of a position. There'll also be interest around the country. When we first did Mississippi about a year ago, Dr. Hutto and I were pretty impressed with the number of folks from other state departments, number twos, even number ones in other state departments that were looking for other opportunities. The reason this is a good time is particularly if we could get it advertised in the next week or two, is it gives people some of the holiday time to begin to pull their materials together. The intensity of the search season, the craziest time, is typically in that February or March. That's when a lot of those second-tier openings become available. In other words, first-tier people have already made their selection, or boards or states have made their selection, and that begins a, just kind of a revolving door. So, something opens up, next group opens. So, February and March are the craziest times in the search process, and we believe with this timeline, and these are tentative dates, so we can, you know, clearly extend if we need to, you're going to, you're going to get, you're going to get first-round draft picks. And this will be, this will be a premier job in the country, certainly within your state. So, we're really comfortable and confident that we could do this. And what we like, and we learned a lesson in Mississippi, as you're probably well aware, and they were a wonderful board to work with with regard to the confirmation hearing. They, you're not looking to start this individual until July 1st. So, whoever takes this position, that is appointed to this position, doesn't really have to make, or create separation from their existing contract, you know, until that confirmation is known. And that gives us a level of protection that I think will be very, very good for the process. So, we're never afraid of timelines that appear to be aggressive. We want you to get the very best candidate that you can. Not aware right now of any other searches, statewide Commissioner or superintendent searches that are currently open. Mississippi will be naming theirs. That search is, for all intents and purposes, completed. They're just waiting for the appropriate time to make their announcement. So, I hope that answers your question.
Other questions, board members, comments? Yes, Dr. Todd?
You know, this last legislative session, our Senate put in a requirement that they have to pass on the selection that we recommend. I thought that was also the case in Mississippi. Did that cause any disruption in that search?
It caused a lot of disruption. For the first time in Mississippi history, they, the board made a unanimous appointment. The individual who came over from the state of North Carolina but had Mississippi roots began work in January and then was not confirmed in May, April or May. And that was devastating to the state board. And just as I think you see in our proposal, we're with you till the end, we're with them till the end. So, we went back and resurrected the search, attracted some high-quality candidates, and, you know, again, we're not at liberty to talk about, you know, who those folks are, but they're in the queue right now, waiting for the appropriate time to do that. But that confirmation and that, I mean, that's, I mean, honestly, in, as you know, the educational landscape has changed in a lot of states, and, you know, there are more and more legislators that would, and governor and gubernatorial staff that want some involvement in this process. And, you know, we intend to work with you on determining the best way to include those folks on the front end of the search so that we don't have to, we don't have to worry about what happens on the back end of the search. But again, you know, you make the appointment or you make a decision on who you want, and then the process of confirmation occurs later. That should not be, pardon me, a barrier with regard to the search.
Just for the other board members, depending on your level of interest in the detail, Dr. Robinson and I have received copies of the proposal and have had a chance to review that. We could ask Steve if he wants to hit the highlights of the proposal, depending on how much interest you may have. And we also have a question we would like you guys to think about this morning. No recommendation from Sharon and me, but do we want to think about possibly breaking into a smaller-group search committee, depending on your time and availability? Everybody would be invited to participate in that, but would not feel, necessarily feel compelled if you're going to have a really busy spring. So, a couple of things for us to grapple with internally while we have McPherson Jacobson on the line.
I would like to make one quick comment. And when we were reviewing some of their notes and things, they talked a lot about transparency to the board. And if you would take just a few minutes to explain what you mean by transparency during the search process.
Yeah, absolutely. Sort of a hallmark, if you will. We will, it's multifaceted, so bear with me for just a minute. One of the very first things we'd like to do is analyze the data that you and your department have already collected with regard to surveys, with regard to job descriptions. We'll analyze and pull all of that together. We would like to schedule a way, a mechanism, to interact with you as a board, either as a group or as individuals through one-on-one conferences with us, to just make sure that the information we have is consistent with what you believe as an individual member of the state board. Then what we'd like to do is determine the best way to collect statewide feedback from stakeholder groups. We have a partnership with a company called K-12 Insight that is a communication engagement company that we've used on all of our big, that we use on our large-scale searches. And that's a way to basically survey your vast statewide public and try to just gather as many voices as we possibly can. Each step of the way, what we'll do is we'll provide feedback to you in terms of what we're discovering and then information to you with regard to the search. And then depending upon the timeline, what we would like to do, and we'll work with the board chair, we work with the board chair very, very closely, and vice chair and staff member with regard to just kind of the status updates. And we're happy to tell you that by such and such a date, we have seven applicants. And what we would say with regard to that, though, is we all know, having done many of these searches, that the really good applicants don't apply until 48 hours before the application deadline. But nonetheless, we will, we'll provide you with the updates. We'll definitely want to issue, if we do the stakeholder survey across the state, we'd like to, we'd want to issue a report with regard to our findings. We'd like to perhaps issue a summary report of what we heard from you, if we go that route with regard to working with you. And then when it comes time to presenting semifinalists, what we'd like to do is, one of us, two of us probably, would come to Frankfurt, and we'll have videos of each one of the semifinalists that we think most closely meets your criteria. Then we'll work you through a process where the committee, if we use a committee, which we would certainly encourage, will have, you'll have access to all the people who are viable candidates that are interested in the position. And we're working through a process, like we have in the other states, where you'll make a selection based on objective criteria. We'll work with you on establishing the interview process, and then ultimately, how do you go about making your final selection? So, we'll answer any questions that you might have. If you'd like, we'll do a, you know, we could do a monthly update on the process. There really isn't a lot to update once we work with you to develop, you know, just kind of smooth out the criteria. But there's always a lot of interest, I think, on your part with regard to who's there. The other thing we would say to you is that this will be much discussed, if it isn't already, and I think it is, within your state with regard to potential candidates. You know, we always say to state board members, if you have somebody that you know of in your region that might meet the criteria, once we get this completely profiled, you know, certainly send them off to us. We'll put something on your website that'll be a link to McPherson Jacobson so that folks can easily get to our application. Our application process is not very onerous. It's really designed to just gather info. We'll do a deep vetting of each of the candidates, starts with a one-on-one interview with each one that we think is viable, and then we'll be checking with their references. So, when we bring you the folks that we believe most closely in line with criteria, they will be ready to, they'll be ready to go as potential candidates for your next Commissioner. So, with that, what we, let me round it by way of saying, we want to work with staff, board leadership. If there's things that you need from us, you let us know. We're happy to, one of us can always make one of your meetings, your next meeting, if you'd want to put us on the agenda for a search update, we're happy to do, you know, 15 minutes. I think we did that in Mississippi and certainly did it in Nebraska, Colorado. But we'll leave that up to you in terms of how much information you want.
And another thing that really interested the committee and caught our eye was when they place somebody in these positions, they, 85% stayed for five years.
Wow.
And 60% stayed for 10 years. And so, they did a pretty good job on their search. And plus, if the person, if I'm not mistaken, stays less than two years, they will do the search, continue a search without any costs except for expenses and things, if I'm not wrong about that. With the situation that we're in, Dr. Todd was talking about with the legislators, you know, I think that's important.
I hope we don't have to use that coupon.
Hopefully, we don't have to have that. We hope to get it right the first time, but for no one. I thought that really helped with the, when we selected this group.
Well, and I thank you for sharing, for raising that. If you talked with the folks in Mississippi, we never, we never wavered. I mean, it was very disappointing what occurred. I know they were devastated, but we, as a team, just got together right away and said, "All right, we're going to finish this, and we'll be with you till the end." But I will tell you the difference that separates us, we believe, from other firms. We're going to come in and work with you and your next Commissioner in a facilitated retreat, once they're on the job for 30 to 60 days, that's in a proposal, and we'll help do some team building, but more importantly, first-year, setting first-year performance objectives. And by having that process in place, we create that foundation for success, and I believe that adds a lot to the longevity of the searches that we've had. I've never had a failed search, and I don't consider, and I've done 80 or 90 of them, I don't consider Mississippi failed. We did not anticipate, nor today, that there would be some factors that would cause the Senate to not confirm the candidate.
If I may comment on that, I'm from Mississippi and lived here all my life, and Steve, and I told him this in front of the board in Mississippi the last time we met with him, you know, we have that guarantee, and I was so impressed with the way Steve, and Michelle worked on it too, but Steve was so committed. I'm probably, I have a vested interest, but Steve was so committed, he gave just as much to this second search as he did to the first search, even though we weren't being paid additional money for that. So, we do take that very seriously.
Well, we all have a lot of, there's a lot at stake in this, in this search. We are on a very aggressive agenda of education reform and innovation, even to the point of developing more innovative assessment and accountability tools for our local communities that are doing just amazing, and for the profession itself, the whole education enterprise is really open to how do we document and how do we support the implementation of more rigorous educational experiences for all of our students. So, that begins, that anchors this search because we are looking for, we know we want somebody who can continue to lead and support and be really strategic in helping us get this done all across the state for all of our learners. So, we've got, we've got a lot at stake, and this board is very committed. I want to raise with you the issue of a committee. We have done a search without a committee, the board as a whole being involved as you can be involved, that can work too. But we also know that this can be very time-consuming, and it is, you know, it's prudent to just offer the board a moment to consider, do you want to establish a search committee now to be our agents, working most directly with the search firm and the staff in this process and reporting to the board on a regular basis? Or do you want to continue to implement this search acting as a committee of the whole, if you will? I want to add one other factor. You will be, this process involves a level of sensitivity and confidentiality that is extraordinary and extraordinarily important. We could lose the star candidate in a heartbeat, a nanosecond, if certain dimensions of confidentiality are breached. We have to understand that that is the situation that we're in, and there'll be lots of opportunities coming your way to breach that confidentiality because, you know, people want to know. It's an important issue in the state, but I think that we will be acting at a level of confidential exchange that we really have to discipline ourselves to honor in every respect. So, I'm going to just ask your opinion and your guidance on how you want to proceed.
And Madam Chair, I might add that in considering committee versus full board, if it is the full board, there'll have to be a quorum of voting members for every meeting that takes place.
And I think that's my only concern. We didn't, we didn't know each other very well in early 2020 and didn't know how we functioned as a board. We were all new. And so, it made perfect sense that we would function as a committee of the whole, and that's how we operated throughout the spring of 2020. I'm kind of interested in ferreting out that possibility together this morning, just because of the quorum question and the demands on your all's time. RJ, I think we don't have any limitations on you as a student member of the board, but we also know you have high school to attend to every single day, and, you know, you don't always get to arrange your own schedule.
Baseball.
And baseball, that's right. Listen, RJ's already going, committee, committee, committee. I forgot about the star baseball player. That's right. So, in all seriousness, those are kinds of things that we need to think about. But if we do move in that direction, Chair, I would suggest that we not expect any limits on who might be willing to serve. It may be a committee of two-thirds of us or three-quarters of us or something. I just really do just want to respect people's spring schedules.
Dr. Thompson has his hand raised.
Oh, thank you.
Good morning, Dr. Thompson.
Good morning, everyone. I think this is a good question, a good valid question. You know, I clearly understand the need to think about a committee just for the sake of expediency, quorum, and so on. The item that I will bring, I guess, I mean, we're going to have to have Senate confirmation, right? So, then whoever you choose, that committee then becomes a part of the conversation. So, how we choose, who we choose, is going to be probably more important as anything else, other than just whether or not we can have quorums. So, I do. So I do know that it's easier to work with a committee, without a doubt. But I would just bring that to the board as a consideration about what does the committee look like, what's the makeup, why it was made up that way? Who chose to make up the committee and so on, which all becomes important questions, I think, uh, when people will look at the confirmation.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, my question is, is can you have a committee that's working in narrowing the applications? Once we get to a certain point, I would think it's got to be prudent to have the whole board there at that particular time.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're, we, I, absolutely. Thank you. So how, um, let me propose that, um, in the next, uh, week or so, we will, um, I will work with the search firm and with the staff here and develop, uh, procedure, proposal for going forward, uh, including all of this, um, perspective that we've discussed today. And, uh, try to put forth a process that affords the greatest degree of participation of the board within the rules of, um, our public, uh, public, uh, governance, rules of governance. And also giving the, uh, board the greatest opportunity for participation at every stage. But, uh, being prudent and trying to facilitate this so that we, uh, take, we are very respectful of everybody's time and keeping the process moving. So we'll be back to you within a week or so with a proposal that, um, for your consideration, for how we proceed to work with the firm. We seem, uh, very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with, uh, McPherson and Jacobson. And, um, thank you so much for, uh, raising your hand to be considered.
So are you thinking of a short special call virtual meeting to, okay.
Yes, within.
Really quickly.
Really quickly, yes. I don't, I, I'm not sure that, uh, we want to construct that right here, right now. I, I think that we can develop a proposal and put it forth, uh, for your consideration in a very short amount of time. And, um, now that we've had this discussion, we've got good insight. And so I'd like to come back with something that is complete, formal, and takes into consideration all of the rules of governance and policy that will, uh, need to be, uh, brought to the table.
So Chair.
I see a question.
So Chair Robinson, are you asking us to support your proposal of what you're saying as the way that we proceed at this point, on a head nod or?
A head nod, yes. I'd love to have a sense that you are willing to give us the time to develop something uh, specific and formal for your consideration regarding how we engage and work with the search firm as a board.
I would certainly support that. I think it's the most effective and efficient manner in which to begin this process.
Thank you. So. I'll say thank you so much. Great. I, Dr. Todd?
I was wanting to have the open discussion, but it's obviously asked the question of how are they going about this second round of search? Do they change their procedure versus what they did the first time?
Oh, in Mississippi.
Mississippi, okay.
Yes.
In Mississippi.
Yes. Did you hear that, the, the, the question? Dr. Joel?
I wanted to unmute. Yes, so I did hear the question. No, we didn't change it. They, uh, they, they chose to do the committee as a whole and that's how we, uh, we conducted business. We worked very closely with the board chair and staff and, uh, in terms of the dialogue. And it seemed to work pretty well for them. The committee gives us an opportunity to, um, I think, interact more frequently. And then, uh, one of the points that was made by one of the board members that we want to echo, and that is that it will be important for the entire board in that last meeting, when we bring forward the candidates and the applicant pool, for everybody to have access to that. And, um, we, we would prefer not doing that just with a committee. Now, we don't have an, we take no issue, uh, meeting with the committee to help narrow down the candidate pool, assuming we can do that, um, in your state confidentially. Because, um, as the point was, was made earlier, any, uh, really, any candidate is concerned about names being brought forward before an appropriate timeline, um, has been administered. And so we always want to be mindful of that. We want to protect their identities. And certainly if you have Kentucky superintendents, that's going to be a concern that they have. So we can work with you on that. The committee makes great sense to us. We can, we can begin our conversations next week. And we could do it committee as a whole too. So, uh, we'll defer to, uh, your preferences.
My question is a little bit different. Given that you went to a search as you normally do, selected a candidate, the board selected a candidate, and then it was, it was turned over. Are you going to go about the second search by seeking more advice from the decision makers in the legislature down there in Mississippi? Or are you just going to go back with the, the search committee like you did before and then try to hand it off and see what happens?
Uh, good point, very good point. Now, we, so, so just so you know, that's been a year-long process, right? So Dr. Hutter and I were with the Mississippi State Board, I don't know, a couple of months ago, where, where we brought it to a conclusion. But as soon as, uh, we, we got the search resurrected, uh, they reached out to, to lawmakers. And they, they, they went out and, and met with the folks that they felt like, um, they, they, they believed needed to be, um, more closely involved. And I think that, that whole thing's been mitigated now. So, um, you know, I, I think that's a lesson learned for us, right? So let's, let's create a mechanism to include the assembly on the front end, the governor's office on the front end, so that we don't have to deal with it on the back end. And we think we can certainly do that. But we'll need your help in terms of what might that look like organizationally.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Well, thank you indeed for, um, holding up your hand to work with us. We appreciate the opportunity and, uh, looking forward to a very successful search. As Commissioner Kenny, uh, I think would, uh, agree, we would love for it to be prudent and expeditious. But we want, first of all, for it to be successful. So thank you again and looking forward to, uh, working with you.
Thank you. Good luck with the rest of your meeting. We're excited to get started and, uh, we'll await further instruction from you after you've had a chance to kick around a couple of the concepts. So good luck to you. We'll partner on this. It'll be a successful search and, uh, we'll talk soon.
Great. All right. Thank you. So that, we're, I guess we're off. The first step in the direction of, um, of our next commissioner.
Dr. Robinson, I'm wondering if you might be interested in us throughout today or even in the next few days? Just reaching out to you to let you know if we would be interested.
Absolutely.
Might give you some sense of.
Absolutely. And I really, um, would appreciate your ideas on how to provide the right representation for this process, for your voice, for those perspectives throughout the process. I mean, that's our business to manage.
Right.
And so, uh, we need to be thoughtful about that. And, um, you know, we all have a lot in this. And, um, those, those are assets that we want to make sure we leverage properly. So don't hold back. Text, email and direct engagement are all welcome. Great. Dr. Thompson, it's good to have you with us. Uh, we look forward to your participation and to your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry I couldn't be there today. I thought I was going to be and was going to be until I, yesterday, I think. Other things popped up as always, but it's good to be with you. I just want to say before we get started, I think the last discussion is very healthy discussion. I appreciate hearing it. Uh, I think it's also healthy, uh, for us all to be able to do everything we can to get the right commissioner the first time, right? Even though I have to just start off by saying, it's been a joy working with, uh, your current commissioner. Commissioner Kenny has just been absolutely wonderful. Good to see you again. Just to let you know, we've gone through two searches since our last meeting. We selected Dr. Ryan Quarles. I served on that search committee to head, uh, KCTCS. Uh, we also, as of yesterday, selected a new president for Bluegrass Community and Technical College. That will be Dr. Greg Feeney. He's a former provost there and acting president now. So we're glad to have both of them on board. I've been meeting with Dr. Quarles regularly so far before he starts in January. We should be up and running. You know, we just finished, uh, the Senate Joint Resolution 98. We were assigned to do earlier in the summer. We did, I don't know how we did this in six months or so, but we did with the help of Ernst &amp; Young and, and Seber, the economic development folk at UK. We, uh, have now provided the House and the Senate with our recommendations. Many of you remember what we were asked to do. We had a resolution to do two, three things, basically. One is to look at the governance system for higher education in Kentucky. Whether we should change it as a whole, create a super board, uh, that would oversee all of the institutions, including KCTCS, or what would we do? We have made that recommendation. Number two, uh, we didn't make that recommendation, but we have made a recommendation. Uh, number two, we were asked to see if there was a feasibility for a four-year institution in Eastern or Southeastern Kentucky. That recommendation has been made. And number three, whether or not KCTCS should basically change its governance model, whether the one and two hundred level courses would go to the four-year institutions and we would create something new, uh, that would be a structure of the technical colleges. So our recommendations have been made. If you, the documents on our website, happy to answer any questions on that. By the way, there's probably a lot to be asked, uh, from a lot of people, but our recommendations have been made. They have that now. You can read the entire document if you'd like. Several things have happened also since our last meeting. We did have a meeting of the Commonwealth Education Continuum. It was good, once again, to have Commissioner Kenny there and Lieutenant Governor, uh, discussing things with us. Lots of stuff going on there and I hope you all are following it. Everything from dual credit webinars, what we're doing, to working with the Kentucky Advising Academy, which is absolutely great. These are all P-12 counselors and advisors. We're now giving out a $5,000 grant, uh, that's out there to help them to help kids, uh, to move, uh, into college. So we're happy with what's going on there with Amanda and, and the folk. Also, by the way, I should just brag a little bit on this group. We were just selected, last year we were selected as one of two most effective, uh, P-20 councils in the nation. This year we were selected one of one. So we're happy, uh, uh, to have that going. Thank you. It's really just, uh, that, I mean, they were really, just really happy to see how higher education and P-12 are working together to really create what I call this new way of thinking about a systematic, uh, way of having our students not only be prepared for college, uh, our career, but for the workforce. So we're happy to announce that. Jennifer Fraker and I spent a lot of time in DC, uh, since that time, hitting everybody, as you can imagine. All of our go-arounds, talking about the different things that's good for Kentucky. You all probably know when I go, I just don't talk about higher ed. I talk about early childhood and I talk about P-12 and some of the things that they can do to really assist all of us. Made with US Department of Upper Leadership, US, uh, Department of Education, as well as the Labor Department. Obviously I had some concerns about the FAFSA, like when will it be out? You know, and they couldn't tell me then, but now we know it's, they said between December 1st, December 31st. We now know it's December 31st, uh, that it would be out. But we also voiced concerns about the foreign credit that they used to not hold against us. But now that asset will be held against, uh, the parents who are filling this out for their students. We're trying to get that changed because many farms may have, maybe worth a lot, but you make no money off of it. So we are worried about that. We're also worried about the multiple, uh, students in college. If you had, used to, if you had two kids in college, you, if, you know, you would get some break for that on the FC. Now that you're not. So that really will hurt a lot of our working class families. So we're trying to figure out how to change some of that. But we also talked about a variety of things, especially how we can connect more with the CTE and some other items in the higher ed where these students can move freely. And the US Department of Education can help us as well as the Labor Department, uh, whether it's WEO or whatever the case may be, to make sure that our students can get a credential that matters. And so that's a lot of the conversation we had. We just had Go, Go Vember, as you all know, where we had virtual meetings with, uh, parents and students to do everything to fill out the FAFSA or how to go to college. It was very successful. We had 27 participa, participating organizations working with us at the CPE to make sure that students understood exactly how to go to college, how they can fund college, how to make sure they don't lose credits, anything they want to talk about, how to fill out FAFSA's, anything that would, and we've been doing this several years now and it's been really successful. We, we had our healthcare collaboratory, which was bringing all of our healthcare partners from around the state, as well as our higher ed partners and some of our K-12 partners that are working on this pipeline to help healthcare. And you probably know that we got 10 million from the legislature a couple of years ago. Well, we were able to bring 48 partners to the table with us. We put 50 million in, uh, private partners to build out this pipeline. And when we talk about building out the pipeline, the educational institutions or higher ed had to be showing they're working with P-12 as well as employers to build the pipeline into the healthcare workforce. That's been extremely successful, even though Kentucky, bragging again, we were the first state to really bounce back in enrollment from COVID. But our healthcare areas that we've invested in, in a very targeted way, much higher enrollments than the, all, the overall enrollments of the other areas. So we're happy with what we're seeing there. We gave three innovation awards. One went to, uh, President Stivers. The other went to, uh, well, the second one went to Ken Fleming, who created HB 200. And the third one went to Eric Friedlander, who's our Secretary of Health and Family Services. And all, all because they had participated heavily in what was going on with their dollars and their time to make sure that this happened. Our Summer Bridge convening, I mentioned it last time a little bit, but we had more than a hundred campus representatives and students participate in this convening that really talked about how it's really been successful. Been one of the more successful things that I think we've done in that P-20 way in Kentucky to make sure that students could go to college. Our Student Success Collaborative, uh, we had a basic needs convening, uh, which really looked at all the things that students needed to have to be successful that they may not know that they had opportunity to have, such as many of our adult learners could actually get SNAP benefits that they didn't know. James Graham Brown really funds our Student Success Collaborative, but we got money from Lumina. And we just got announced, uh, 1.5 million from ECMC to continue this work in the state. There's a lot more to cover. I will say that yesterday, uh, I got a call from Complete College America. You all know who that is. They, they work with, uh, 48 states actually on student success. Many agencies participating and how we can do things like, uh, help close gaps, how we can get more people, uh, with the degree that matters into the workforce. But every year they give out an award based on innovation and based on success of those items, like success, uh, especially with, uh, underrepresented, low income and a variety of other things. And the things that have been implemented, that other people may not have implemented to do so. I was given a heads up that next week, uh, Kentucky CPE will receive that award, uh, which is absolutely a just fantastic way of thinking about the work that we're doing in Kentucky that other people nationally are able to see. So Madam Chair, uh, there's so much more to talk about. I won't take up your time to do that, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Thompson, thanks so much. I, I, if we ever needed a source of energy and enthusiasm and, you know, it's, uh, we're doing great, but we're going to do a whole lot more. We can call on you and we appreciate, uh, that contribution in and of itself, not to mention the amazing results that. not to mention the amazing results that, that we are seeing across the state. In addition to our interim commissioner serving on the continuum, I've asked Diane Woods to join the continuum leadership team as a representative of the, of the KBE. So, she will be joining you shortly because this notion of knitting this process together in a way that really scaffolds students and supports them and their families as, as we hope to open the world of post-secondary to all of our students is, it's not going to happen just because we think it's a good idea. It's going to happen because of intentional actions that are structured to bring the system together to support the outcome that we desire. So, continuing to be vigilant and active in that regard is something that we certainly embrace. We continue, Dr. Thompson, to have concern about finding more students, more candidates interested in the education workforce. And so, we're going to keep bringing that topic up as one for continued work together through the continuum and in other forums as well, so that our college presidents know that this is an important issue. Those who fund post-secondary education understand the need to support teacher education and educated development at the pre-service level in a way that makes it truly modern, state-of-the-art, and effective. We want our candidates coming into practice at the state-of-the-art, not needing remediation in anything. So, that means, you know, we all have to be concerned about that. And the whole idea that this is, this is not missionary work. This is work that's essential to having a peaceful community and a vibrant economy. It is the work that requires us to bring heart and intellect and our best efforts to construct. So, it's wonderful having the partnership with you in that regard as well. Other comments or questions for?
Madam Chair, I would like to comment on that quickly. I, I think it's absolutely important. We've asked for a little money to, to be mission-related around that, to be honest with you. But it will take really some dedication from EPSB, KBE, and CPE to really formulate that process together to make it happen. You know, I wish it was all in my power. I would absolutely wave that magic button. I mean, push that magic button, but it's going to take all of us. And I think the continuum is working heavily toward that. As a matter of fact, we're redesigning Kentucky State University now to really, that whole education unit, to really focus on building those teachers of color as one of our primary institutions to do that with this main focus. So, we look forward to that being in place within the next six to eight months. So, I'm sorry, I, I know other people have questions.
Fabulous. Good news about Kentucky State. Thanks. Other comments or questions?
Well, you know, since, yeah, since you mentioned Kentucky State, I think that's an excellent idea. I hope that as they do structure that there at Kentucky State that, we, we had a heavy conversation yesterday about teaching what we need in the field as opposed to the university's teaching. And then, we've got to come together and spend a lot of money to mirror those two. So, I hope in that particular dialogue that, that we can have major influence, especially in the area of reading, because the individuals that you're talking about that would be in the field helping us with our own diverse population, we need to make sure that, that we're taking the needs of the children in, in the consideration and not just the pedagogical skills at the university level.
First of all, Dr. Poe, you're absolutely right. And my ideal way of designing, and we got a chance to do that a little bit at KSH right now, a teacher prep program, you will have people in the field very much interacting on the front end with us to design that process, as it is important for us to look at even professional development because we already have tons of people in the field, right? And how do we do that in a systematic way with post-secondary and higher ed together? And making sure that we have that reciprocal way of thinking about what's needed immediately and then being able to have enough flexibility to change things. And you're right, reading is a key issue, literacy, all of those areas that we talk about are important. So, what does elementary education look like with that in mind? Or elementary teachers look like with that in mind and so on? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, other comments, questions? Dr. Thompson, we always appreciate your joining us and look forward to your further participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report from our really busy commissioner, interim commissioner. Kenny, please.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to see you all again this morning. Thank you for a really healthy and lively discussion of yesterday, which really helps inform the department's work. And so, anytime that we can have that and get that additional information from you, it's really helpful for us. I also want to thank the Board's Evaluation Committee that helped us select our contractor, outside vendor, to help us with our search for the next permanent commissioner. I also want to thank the staff at KBE that helped support that effort. It's always, we have really knowledgeable, supportive staff here, and they always make things a little bit easier when you kind of have them at your side. I, I also want to thank really the department as a whole. As I've spent, it's already been two months that I've been here in this role, really leaning upon lots of individuals here at the Department of Education, especially our leadership team. Couldn't do this without them. They are the best of the best, and I'm just really proud to work alongside them each and every day. I feel we are on our way to locating the next commissioner of education, so that's exciting. But I want to assure you that whatever time it takes, you know, I'll be here to help. Help along the way. And I do continue to take this responsibility very seriously. It is an awesome task that this position holds, the lives of all of our students, and really trying to support all of our staff, both here at the department and across school districts across the Commonwealth. So, it is an awesome responsibility. I recognize during the time that I am here as interim, one of the very important things is moving us forward. The interim position, we can't just be stagnant. We have to keep moving forward. And I feel like we're doing that with United We Learn. We really focused in a lot of that yesterday in our Portraits of a Learner discussion. So, we've spent a lot of time as a staff talking about those two things, really trying to get the message out, you know, so that people understand what we're trying to do. Dr. Todd mentioned the power of conversations. We'll need to do a lot more conversation with people so that we can build that buy-in and keep moving ourselves forward. One of the best things that I've had the opportunity to do, as you know, in my former position, I was usually behind the computer, looking at spreadsheets. And this position has afforded me the real opportunity of being out with students and staff and districts and interacting with teachers and administrators in a face-to-face. And it's been tremendous. I've done everything, and I see our United We Learn experiences happening. Vibrant learning is happening all over the Commonwealth. We just need to bring everybody along to make sure that we are touching every student's life in every single district. So, I want us to be encouraged by that. I, I get encouragement when I get the chance to go out and meet these wonderful teachers or talk to the students. I've had the pleasure of meeting Nelson the Llama and learned about math and science in, as, as kids in Robertson County interact with sort of their livestock. And I've seen kids interacting with each other so much in elementary school classrooms. And I've been a bus monitor. So, I've seen lots of, yes, yeah, there is proof. So, and that affords me the opportunity to go on that route and see the interaction. Now, I will say the superintendent was the bus driver that day, but.
So, just imagine the kiddos who stepped on that bus and Superintendent Holbrook was driving and Commissioner Kenny was the bus monitor. It may have been lost on him.
Just maybe.
Well, they certainly were very interactive with us. I know, I know that we, we had as much fun as they did. But it did afford me the opportunity of, to be able to see students' lives outside of the classroom, the routes along their way, and the interaction on the bus, which is always kind of lively, I guess I would say. So, that was a lot of fun. From the state perspective, I have been meeting with legislators. Brian and I have kind of been on our roadshow as we are just introducing ourselves, making sure that legislators know that we, as a department and, and as board, we are here and available to answer questions, provide information as they consider very important public policy that affects education. We, our message has been, please allow us to help you so that you don't make a mistake, unintended consequences, things that really impact the lives of students and staff just because you didn't know. So, I will say that I think those conversations have been well-received. And we, as a result, we are getting a lot of requests from legislators for information, for data, just to help with understanding of issues. And so, I see all that as very positive in our conversations. I know that we need to, in this time, continue to support a policy environment that keeps students at the very center of everything that we do. And so, we talk about that frequently. But we know that there's going to be challenges along the way. There'll be challenges with United We Learn, Portraits of a Learner. But there are two big things that really I keep focusing on, on a daily basis. And maybe this is, again, from my operational background. But we have two big challenges facing us right now, and I know it keeps our school districts sort of uncomfortable, and that is recruitment and retention of teachers and other staff. So, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our janitorial staff. That's a big challenge for us right now. And the other thing that we've hit on just a little bit is chronic absenteeism. And I had the opportunity of really elevating and talking to superintendents at the Kentucky Association of School Superintendents Conference recently about both of those issues, and they feel it. They feel it is real. We can't provide these vibrant learning experiences and all for our students if we don't have high-quality educators at the front of the classroom guiding and leading the way. And we certainly can't impart this experience to our students if they're not there. So, and as I talked with our superintendents, some things are outside of their control. So, we want to assure them that they can't solve these problems alone. So, I had the opportunity to talk to them about that a little bit. I, I have had the pleasure of, and, and the other thing about when students are absent, they miss out on really important development of relationships, I think. Whether it's relation, if you think back to when you were in school, some of your best friends you met in school. So, they're missing out on those types of relationships. They're missing out on that loving teacher at the front of the classroom, and they're also missing out on those conscientious people that are supports in our school districts that really are just looking out for their best interest each and every day. And it will take our collective efforts to try to figure out solutions, approaching it from all different facets of the people that make up our educational community. Recruitment of, of teachers, we, we also need to celebrate our teachers. And I've had the opportunity, I got to attend the Western, at Western Kentucky University, the Kentucky Hall of Fame induction. And let me tell you, talk about inspirational. I had the opportunity to read the nominations and the people in the room. We had an auditorium full of people that were supporting those teachers. And we, I think of what it takes to have that level of support for excellent teachers. We all know that we probably, we need to celebrate every day instead of waiting to the end. While it's really important to do a Hall of Fame induction, but celebrations need to happen each and every day for our teachers. And I also had the ability to recognize those Milken Award winners, and we're going to hear, we're going to see them later today. Let me tell you, there is nothing better than being in an auditorium full of kids and they have no idea why they're there. They're there for some kind of assembly, you know, and they're all kind of, here's another assembly. And then, this teacher gets recognized. I don't know who is more surprised, the teacher or the students, but it's, it's just joy all over. It is joy, complete joy. And the joy on the students is recognition. It, it goes from surprise to, oh, yeah, he's a great teacher, or she's a great teacher. So, nothing better than getting to go out. While the work here is very hard in supporting our districts and our students, it is moments like those that really, I wish every employee here at the Kentucky Department of Education could go and experience it because that's why we're here. So, we've had, I've had a very full last couple of months. I've enjoyed it very, very much. My full report, of course, is in your board materials, so you can read more about the adventures here at Kentucky Department of Education. And I want to also wish everyone really happy holidays as we head into the holiday season. It will be a time of rest for a lot of our district staff and students so that they can recharge and come back for the spring. So, best wishes for happy holidays.
Thank you. Commissioner Kenny, that was a very delightful report. I enjoyed reading and seeing the pics of you out there among our district leaders and our students and teachers. Comments or questions?
I'd like to make a, make a comment. I know that she's been visiting the legislatures, and I think that's very important to all of us because we're all in this together. We have to work together with them. And I think she's done a wonderful job doing that and talking to some of the superintendents. I talked to Sanford from Robertson County, Holbrook, Superintendent Holbrook, and he had really enjoyed your visit. And I know Mr. Burchett from Harrison County and Johnson County. Mr. Tom Cochran's looking forward to you coming there too. So, I think it's meaningful for the, for the commissioner to go out. And I think that can be a lesson to our new commissioner coming in and maybe some characteristics that our interim commissioner is doing right now that we need to look for in a, in a new commissioner. And we, we appreciate you doing the things you're doing right now.
Thank you.
Keeping going.
And I would echo Mr. Turnbull's comments too. When I talk to folks in the field, you know, the British are famous for saying, keep calm and carry on. And I think you at the helm has kind of sent this pervasive message of, keep calm, we're carrying on. So, we really appreciate your steadfastness and, and low drama.
Fingers crossed.
I will say that, all of, all of that, yes, yes. But having the opportunity to sit and listen to you during the Hall of Fame presentations and the sense of pride I had that you're our commissioner was amazing. I've heard many presentations from you, but I saw a different side of it there. And to have the people around me say, we really are in good hands, aren't we? Yes, we are.
I would say that not only can they just say that, they see it. In action, your being out in the schools and in the districts. I hear that as, as part of my task with colleges I'm working with, that she's out here. She comes to visit us. And not only do the, the staff appreciate that, the parents do too, knowing as, as Dr. Tucker talked about yesterday, parents want to know their kids are safe, and this is someone that we trust with our kids. So, thank you so much. Good luck in Harrison County.
Thank you. That's tomorrow, Harrison County.
And Jessup County called, they're offering you a bus monitor position.
I did kind of wonder, you know, we are short on bus monitors.
Well, you got a day job. Thank you so much for that report. We're going to go now to our act- We're going to go now to our action discussion items. And the first item is amendment to 704 KAR3:095, the use of response to intervention in K3. And our chief academic officer, Dr. Nikki Ray, will be leading this presentation with policy advisor Sarah Peace.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
And Vice Chair and members of the board. We are very happy to be with you to bring forward amendments to this regulation. We are here specifically because Senate Bill 9 of 2022 amended KRS 158.305 to require the board to further define a multi-tiered system of support. And I'm joined by two members of the Office of Teaching and Learning Division of Program Standards today. And so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize them. They have done much work to build out our KYMTSS system. And so I have with us Crystal Rowland. She is the Director of the Division of Program Standards. And then also Dr. Melissa Wainwright. She serves as our state MTSS coordinator and does much work to support districts across the state. She has a very vibrant partnership with the educational cooperatives. So just grateful for their contribution to this regulation. There was also a cross-agency team that included members of the Office of Continuous Improvement and Support and members of the Office of Special Education and Early Learning who informed and gave us feedback on the proposed amendments. And of course, Sarah is here. She has done all of the technical amendments, all of the actual changes to the regulation. And so if you have specific, more granular questions about any of those amendments today, she is here to support our thinking. But the first slide that we have, this just previews the associated statutes. So one of the key changes to this regulation is that we were moving from the use of response to intervention specifically for K3. And we have pulled in the associated regulator, excuse me, statutes that allow us to now look at this more comprehensively for K12. So what you're looking at today would impact not just the K3 space, but the K12 experience for a student. On the next slide, we're going to dig into some of the section amendments. So Section 1, and Meredith, you can go, thank you so much. Section 1 is the definitions. And so I want to point out four key definitions that were amended as a result of feedback from the Cross-Agency Committee and work that was done within the Office of Teaching and Learning. And so the first one is the definition of MTSS, so Multi-Tierred System of Supports. And that, of course, was the primary charge of the statutory requirements that were in 158.305. So on the next slide, you'll see that definition. And MTSS, if the regulation is approved, would mean a multi-level prevention system designed to maximize student achievement and social and behavioral competencies through an integration of differentiated universal instruction, assessment, and intervention. So it includes all three components. On the next slide, I wanted you to be able to take a more close look at the way that we have defined the tiered delivery model. So you can see there, Tier 1 Universal Instruction means instruction provided to all students based on the state's academic standards as set forth in regulation and aligned to that particular statute 6451, which is the legislative goals for education. Tier 2 Targeted Intervention would mean supplemental evidence-based intervention in addition to and in alignment with Tier 1 Universal Instruction for students identified by universal screening and diagnostic assessment data as being at risk for not meeting grade level expectations. And then for Tier 3 Intensive Intervention, it would mean that in addition to Tier 1 Universal Instruction and Tier 2 Targeted Intervention, a student is provided evidence-based intervention services based on the diagnostic assessment and progress monitoring data with an intensity and duration matched to the student's individualized academic and behavioral needs. So these definitions already existed, but we did take the opportunity to be able to refine and add in some language to help further delineate between the three tiers there. In Section 2, there were two key changes. So we, of course, needed to integrate the definition of MTSS in Section 1. And so you can see there on the slide, it's added in now. Each local school district shall implement a comprehensive MTSS for K12. That's very different from the original language, it was focused primarily on K3. And then it also added in some language around progress monitoring. As you can see there, individual student progress reports shared with parents of each student in K12 that summarize the student's academic skills, behavior, and any intervention plans and services being delivered. So this is already happening, as you all well know. Schools are providing parents and families and students with progress reporting. But this now would ensure that it is in statute and that MTSS is acknowledged as a comprehensive system. Section 3 is the final change we've added in, that districts would demonstrate evidence of implementation of a comprehensive MTSS. And that would be submitted by October 1 of each year. And it was interesting, and when we presented this at SCAC, so Assistant Superintendent Janabeth Francis recommended that this reporting roll into the CDEP. And I thought that was an excellent recommendation. We could work on developing a tool, work with Dr. Foster and her team to be able to incorporate that there. At LSAC, Chair Fletcher mentioned that it could be part of the district assurances. So I think that will be the next task, if the regulation is approved, to really think through what we want reported specifically. You know, sometimes we'd want to make sure that what we're asking for, there's a purpose for it and it's going to be usable to us. Otherwise, it's just a compliance mechanism. So we want to make sure that that's very purposeful. And we want to ensure that we have effective communication around what that will look like prior to the first round of reporting. So excited to have that opportunity because I think we can learn much from that in terms of the supports and resources that need to be coming from the Office of Teaching and Learning and agency at large around effective MTSS implementation. So that is all that we have in terms of the amendments, but we are open to any questions that the board may have around this regulation.
Thank you so much. This is an impressive proposal. And I'm impressed that we are ready to take it on. Are there questions and comments?
I have a quick question. So I used to be an intervention coach before I moved into high school. So I'm really familiar with the MTSS. So I do appreciate you all adding that language up till 12th grade because I feel like we do a really good job in the early grades. But then it kind of starts slacking off once they hit fourth and up. But I just had a question on Slide 7 where you all mentioned that the students' progress reports would need to be shared. Is that going to be for all tiers or just Tier 2, 3? It doesn't specify.
So based on the language here in our guidance, we would say that it would be for all tiers. So typically, that would happen for Tier 1 regardless. But so now they would really want to be intentional on the progress as a result of the Tier 2 intervention and what's also happening at Tier 3.
Okay. And do you all have an idea yet of what kind of data you're going to be looking for, school districts?
I think that that's the next step for that cross-agency team. And when we know more, I mean, that may be something that we could just even share in writing via Dr. Brewer to go out to the board for your feedback.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And if I may add, under Section 2, there's a listing of the various components that are required in the district's MTSS plan. And so we would be referring right back to Section 2 and developing those reporting requirements too.
Other questions? We, I'm excited about this proposal and would appreciate a motion to approve the proposed amendment to 704 KAR3:095, Use of Response to Intervention in K3. May I have such a motion?
I move that we approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Poe. Further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor of this proposed amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any disapproval? Any ayes? We have passed the proposal. Look forward to the next question on data and what we count to know how we're doing. Thank you so much. Next, we have a waiver request from Estill County Board of Education related to 702 KAR4:180. And we'd like to welcome to the table Associate Commissioner Matt Ross and KDE Division Director Shay Ritter to present this waiver request. And please.
Good morning. We bring a lot of waivers. And sometimes the stories behind the waivers are very routine and just sort of, just sort of, you know, standard. But occasionally, we get a waiver that has, you know, a story that sort of highlights what some of our districts are going through. So this waiver would, what we're asking is, what the board, their board is asking is that we waive part of our facility regulation and the incorporated manual that's incorporated by reference to allow the district to move a project for the renovation or replacement of a middle school up to basically, I guess.
The top.
And so we have Superintendent Brock here who can tell a little bit of story. I'll let Shay start a little more detail, but, and hopefully, we have some pictures. I don't know if we can put them up. But I think they help tell that story. So I'll let Shay start.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. So we were made aware of this issue. This goes back quite a long ways. 1997, I believe, is when the original building was built. This is their middle school in Estill County. We had, conveniently, we have a staff member who, as he worked in the private sector many years ago, grew up in Estill County, was very familiar with this. So we sent staff down there as well to kind of take a tour of the building. Every time I've read through this, and I usually don't read engineering reports, but every time I've read through and looked at pictures, this looks worse and worse to me, quite frankly. And thank you, Meredith, that's the one that's doing that. As we look at these waivers, as Matt said, some are very, you know, very simple. This one, to us, we're, quite frankly, you know, have some fear. School security and safety is a concern because doors that won't close or doors that stay closed and can't open, that's a, it's a big red flag for us. As well as as you look through these pictures, there are some gaps in walls, corners, et cetera. And of course, Superintendent Brock can speak a lot more clearly to all these issues they've had down there. The waiver itself, what we're waiving is actually part of this amendment process to their district facility plan, usually takes quite a while, months and months and months for meetings and things like that. As this, as you'll see, this is simply too urgent. And we felt that this waiver, staff obviously supports it, as do I, that the waiver would allow them to accelerate it and, you know, get KDE's process out of the way so that they could address the financial part of this with the General Assembly in the upcoming session, which starts very soon. So I'll let Superintendent Brock speak to the rest of it, if that's okay. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you all for considering this waiver for us in Estill County. If you look at the pictures, you can see we obviously have an issue in the middle school. It's well documented. It started as soon as we entered the building back in 97. I'm brand new this year. I had to do a lot of research on this and talk to teachers, people in the district. It basically started moving the minute that students came in. It was built on pyridic shell. And at that time, they didn't know how to mitigate the building on it, didn't know what was going to happen with it. So the building started moving. There was a lawsuit. There were some arrangements come to. Long story short, they went back in the building with heavy equipment, tore up all the slabs, replaced all the slabs, did some studies, determined that the sheer walls at the time would not move because they were too heavy. That was completed in 2007. The building continued to move for a little while, and then it kind of settled down. Over the last two years, it's moved more than it had in the previous five or six years. We've got some marks on the building that I put when I came to monitor. And it's already moved about a quarter of an inch since I've been there. And that was, I put the marks were put there at the 1st of August. We have places you can walk in a classroom, cove base you can see at the door, and over in the far side of the room, it's covered completely up with the heave of the slab, up to five and a quarter inches. We've got a structural engineering firm that is continuing to monitor it for us. So currently, it is structurally safe, but it does have hazards. As mentioned before, we cut doors off all the time so that they'll open and shut. We've had kids go in classrooms, go to leave, the door won't open. We have to get maintenance out there. We have to get, figure out how we can get that door open. We do have a backup plan that we could use, a building, a central office building, which used to be the old middle school. But it's not big enough, and it would require a whole lot of modifications. That's kind of our backup plan. We're hoping that we can keep it safe to keep students in until we can potentially get a new middle school. But at any time, they could tell us, you know, hey, it's not structurally sound anymore. That's why we're having it monitored. We've had emergency service personnel out there over the years to help get kids out of classrooms. We had a teacher stuck in an office about a month ago, and it literally moves that quickly. It's, it just, I can't explain it, but she went in her office, closed the door, and then couldn't get back out. Maintenance had to come and open it. When we just did our recent ADA Lock and Safety Update, they had to modify door jams from the beginning of the project to the end of the project, which was just about three or four weeks in order to get locking mechanisms to work. So I'd be happy to give any of you all a tour. I can tell you, the structural engineer I had, I asked him, I said, have you ever seen anything like this? He said, no. He said, I'm used to buildings sinking, but I'm not used to them coming up. And there's places, you can see in the pictures, three, four inches, one slab is above the other one. It's developed some trip hazards and hauls. So we've had to rework some stuff there, redo some flooring. And we've got to continuously monitor it. It is my source of anxiety in the district because I want our kids to be safe. That's why we're monitoring it, and we'll continue to do so. But I would appreciate if you all would approve this waiver for us.
Well, Charlie, I'm happy to support it and just want to offer my thanks to you for taking the concern so seriously and ensuring the safety of the kids in the middle school while we're working to mitigate those issues. And your diligence there is admirable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you so much. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Other than adding a sense of urgency and great appreciation to the diligent attention to this, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please proceed to the panel.
Thank you.
I am going to suggest that we take a short break because we have two lengthy items and then we'll have guests. So let's see.
10 minutes?
10-minute break. We'll recess.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay.
Our next item, 2022, 2023 Data at a Glance and statewide efforts to support teaching and learning. We'd like to invite to the table KDE Associate Commissioner Rhonda Sims, KDE Deputy Commissioner and Chief Equity Officer Thomas Woods Tucker, KDE Chief Academic Officer Mickey Ray, and KDE Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster to come and present this item for review and discussion.
Good morning, Chair Robinson, members of the Kentucky Board of Education, and folks who are here and listening in. It's our pleasure to give you a quick data at a glance. And I'll turn it over to one of the, excuse me, the best team in all of state boards of education, State Department of Education, my group of folks right here. We'll start with Rhonda.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Just appreciate time on the agenda today for you to have some conversation. We are going to not focus on data slides. I know you will be heartbroken to see those tiny numbers. But we are going to talk just a little bit about what are some things we've gleaned from the data as we've looked at it. And then really, I think the important part of the conversation is then what do we do about that? What's the action? What's the, what's the activities? What are the things that are ongoing that could be supporting some areas that we see need some support in the data? So we're going to give So we're going to give you just some sort of high level statements around data rather than looking at the numbers. You were provided back in October when we formally released results for accountability October thirty-one, so trick or treat. So we were releasing on October thirty-first. We did have some opportunity with media in advance that week. We were with the legislature the next day to have a discussion, a little bit about what the data is showing. But the delay this year was related to the accountability standard setting. And we did have Patrice and Steve, who really were great contributors to that work. We also had built in some extra time for our local superintendent's advisory council to consider the cuts that came out of the work. And so that kind of pushed us back a bit with delaying the accountability results. I'm going to remind you today, there were a lot of things people had much, much earlier than October thirty-first. Also want to start with the context, you know, this is a snapshot of data. It highlights some assessments that are given, some throughout the year, some earlier in the year, and some that are at that end point of the year. That's the Kentucky Summit of Assessment. And, you know, we always say in our data world, you know, it's a piece of data. You need to look at it in patterns with other data, with other things that you have, that you generate there locally. It does meet our federal and state requirements for an approved system, but it shouldn't be the total focus of what your discussion is around data. There are many other opportunities for schools to have that. But we do want to kind of highlight some takeaways. And I also wanted to kind of build a context. We still, after this many years, get a bit of confusion about what is the assessment and what is the accountability? And I've heard the conversations yesterday at the board, also this morning, you're going to see some of those themes come back up here in our time together today. When we're looking at what are the pieces, I just want to kind of get us all on the same page with that because the cool council is looking at the assessment, but they're also looking at the accountability. And both of those have, you know, various rules and laws, both state and federal level that govern them. So let's remind ourselves, on the assessment system, you're looking at how individual students perform on a specific test. You're also, that can be things that can inform what you're doing in the classroom, what you're seeing in the performance of an individual child, paired again with formative, other kinds of experience, the idea of performance oriented tasks that students are doing, some of this rich work that you've been hearing about from the local laboratories of learning. That assessment information is in districts in early August. Now, would everyone like that earlier? Of course. And I think we're, we begin to move toward that very quicker turnaround. One of the slowest things about the assessment results is Kentucky is required in state law to have different item types. And some of those have to be human hand scored. We also are using AI scoring some already. So we see a potential for a quicker return if that kind of assessment exists somewhere within our future system. But the results were back in August. We also release a subset of items every year. That is a state requirement in law. And so districts receive the items and they receive how their students performed on the item. So we generate data sets for that. Now, the items are available to anyone to look at and the state results, but obviously you have to be in the district with the right confidentiality to see how your particular students have responded on that assessment. The assessment pieces are then used in the accountability. And the final reminder is the assessment was on the same scale in twenty-two and twenty-three. So we can compare assessment results from twenty-two and twenty-three. If we try to go back, and there's always a desire to go back pre-pandemic, back to twenty nineteen, it is not a direct line comparison. So if you have to, if you look at it, you have to look with an awful lot of cautions and you will find that we don't usually show it compared that way because of those cautions. Now, on the accountability side of things, it's taking all those various measures, putting them together and then giving a performance level to the school. It can inform the overall program. The data comes later for accountability because there's lots of pieces that have to go together, plus a standard setting process had to occur this year because this is the first year we're fully implementing what was passed in twenty twenty. Right at the beginning of the pandemic, Senate Bill one fifty-eight passed and then everything kind of shut down. And this has taken us till twenty-three to get everything in place because we had both status, how you perform currently, and now change how you report current compared to the prior year. With the accountability, there's a focus on reporting both for federal and state. We use colored dashboards, color coded dashboards, and then we identify the federal, CSI, TSI. You really cannot compare twenty-two accountability and twenty-three because adding in that change element really meant we were looking at two different pieces combined together. So you really can't look at those compared to each other. So as we think about the assessment system then, just a little graphic to kind of pull this together before we launch into some findings. So the accountability system again is a bigger piece. Accountability includes all of the assessments we're required to administer. So you see in the assessment system, we do reading, math, those are federal, required and state. Science is required federally. Social studies and writing are required only by Kentucky. And then we have an English language proficiency test. So if you've had English language learners, usually in around January, they must take the access assessment in Kentucky. We're one of the, what's called a WEDA consortium state. And it is how are students who are English learners attaining English? So it's not content based testing, but it's English testing of attainment of English language. Those are the required pieces. Now, in addition to that, we do administer, we provide an ACT at the junior level. And for the last two years, we've provided the opportunity for seniors to retake the ACT. About fifty percent of our students take that option. The ACT junior is included in the accountability system, but it says one measure of post-secondary. So we report the results for all kiddos in Kentucky. We can compare ourselves nationally a bit on the ACT, obviously, but post-secondary ready has a whole menu of options, how students can demonstrate they are ready for the next step and have that sort of yes designation under post-secondary ready. In addition, we also report federally graduation rate, that's a federal requirement, and quality of school climate and safety, which is both state and federal requirement. So lots of pieces come together to do accountability. The assessments are really the focus of how students are doing on each test. And so that, hopefully that graphic kind of puts us all in the same position. Now, as we move forward just a little bit to talk about some highlights, I'm really just going to do a slide of, here are some very positive takeaways where we see some movement forward. Kelly's going to talk in more detail about TSI and CSI. But even though we do not identify new CSI schools this year, though we won't do that again until twenty twenty-five, it's a three-year cycle, we have to run all of the calculations because student, schools may have the opportunity to exit CSI status. And we in fact had a twenty-three schools exit. And Kelly will talk more in detail about that a little bit. We also annually have to run what's called TSI, Targeted Support and Improvement, and it focuses on how groups of students are achieving within schools. And we had a hundred and eighty-five schools that had been TSI that showed improvement and are no longer TSI. So I would say this slide is some of our celebration points. You know, we, we celebrate the hard work that's happening every year, all day, every day in Kentucky schools, and you've had some exciting examples of that over the last day and a half, as you've talked about that. The assessment, the assessment system and accountability system provides just that consistent snapshot, and we do want to highlight some of those positives that have come out of that. So we will put that there as our first point. When we look at how our elementaries, our middles and our highs perform, if we kind of look at them as three sets, because we have a system that compares elementaries to elementaries and middles to middles and high to high, we see greater numbers, greater percentage of students performing at those upper levels of proficiency and distinguished in every area at elementary. There is one area at elementary that was editing and mechanics, which are those kind of surface skills of writing. They stayed the same at elementary with that particular measure. Everything else showed movement forward. So our younger students are, I think, getting back, I'll use this little term, in the swing of school a bit more as it reflects in this data. There's lots of other ways we see good improvement around schools as well. When we look at middle school, we also saw pretty steady movement forward. Math stayed the same. Social studies declined a little. So elementary stronger, middle still quite strong. When we move to our high schools, we see more mix of performance. At high school, we see increases in social studies and writing, and there I'm referring to combined writing and on-demand writing. We do on-demand writing, which is responding more to like an essay type prompt. We also have editing mechanics items that are more traditional grammar type focused items, and we put those together for an overall writing score. And so in overall writing, as well as on-demand writing, our high school students have shown increases and with social studies. Reading stayed the same, other areas had declines. When we look at the four-year graduation rate, almost all student groups showed improvement in graduating in four years. The one slight exception for Kentucky is not a large group in our state, it's native, Hawaiian, and other Pacific Islanders. So we do have enough students to report that group, but it is not one of our larger groups that we report. Overall, our four-year graduation rate was ninety-one point four as a state. Increases in the junior state ACT composite score. Again, this is a national test. It's the, one of the few places we have long-term trend. They maintained their trend, trend through the pandemic. So for our junior composite, we tested more students than ever as juniors, forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-nine students took the junior ACT, and we still went up by two tenths on the composite. And I'll remind you, ACT is a fairly short scale. And so every kind of movement on those tents and a whole composite number is typically pretty important and significant. We also saw the number of students meeting CPE, those are the benchmarks established with Dr. Thompson's group in Kentucky. ACT in English and in math, we both had students increasing their, their meeting of those CPE benchmarks. Reading, there was a slight decline in meeting, the percent meeting the benchmarks. Now, in addition, you may have seen some other data that came out for ACT that would have been earlier than October thirty-first. That's called the graduation class report. That's a national ACT release. And it looks at students that were graduating in twenty-third, in twenty twenty-three, whereas this data are students that are still juniors in twenty twenty-three. So that data lags. And for some of our students now, they have at least two assessment results. They have a junior and a retake as a senior. And there are students that, you know, obviously take the ACT more on their own because they're trying to achieve a certain scholarship level. So those are all some things that we think are, you know, highlights to sort of be considered as a reflection of some recovery that I think we can see post-pandemic and some movement forward. Now, because our work is so important to helping support areas that need some support, I do want to take our next slide to talk about some things that we can kind of generally see in the data. Yesterday, you had some good conversation about some efforts that are making some differences potentially with the achievement gap and reducing those gaps between certain groups. I will tell you that overall, we still do have achievement gaps. We report those very publicly. They're in the briefing packs that you were seeing, that you were sent with the release of data. So we still need to focus some attention around helping to reduce those gaps and moving all students forward with anything that we might be measuring or reporting. Kelly and her work today is going to talk a bit about TSI and some efforts that can be made there because again, that's a focus on groups and group performance. So if you identify for targeted support and improvement, it means you have groups that are performing as low as that bottom five percent mark in the system that's used for CSI. For math and science, we see a need for support across all those grade levels, both elementary, middle, and high. It stands out most at high school. At high school, we are really having challenges with science. And with math, we just are not where we would want our students to be. And with that proficient and mark, I think math at high school is around a third of our students, a little over at proficient and distinguished. Now, when we think about this, you know, the assessment again is that one snapshot in time that meets these federal and state requirements currently. There's been a lot of exciting conversation about it, reimagining a future with a different kind of assessment that is more responsive to where we need our kids to be. This is currently just what we have legally in place, and there's that work that is ongoing to reformulate that for the future. And so we'll be eager to see what comes out of United We Learn and how we pull those pieces together. If we move to the next slide, Meredith, I do want to just remind us, you've already had great conversation, both in Commissioner Kenny's report this morning and other things yesterday, that there are factors impacting what we see in these results. We can look at this and we can see some recovery occurring post-pandemic. But we also had a huge focus in this data release around chronic absenteeism. You know, if we can't, we've got to get those kids there and engaged. And part of your conversations have been about how to make school more engaging, more vibrant. But chronic absenteeism, we know is having an impact. The teacher shortage is having an impact, and particularly for these critical areas of math and science. We hear anecdotal with people, just how long sometimes it takes to get a math and science teacher, especially if you're in rural parts of the state. Science, there's also, I think, support you're going to hear about with Mickey Ray today around science. What are some things we can do to be supportive? Because remember, science is still being taught pretty traditionally. Kids are taking biology, they're taking chemistry, they're taking physics, but our science standards are quite integrative and focused. And that integration seems to appear more naturally at elementary and middle, and it gets more segregated as we get to high school. And I say that as a former, as a recovering high school teacher, so I under, understand that piece of it. So I think we have to think wisely about science and what kinds of supports are needed with science as we move forward. We see that in, in our lowest performing area there. Legislators obviously are already attending to some of these issues. And I know Commissioner Kenny is, they're interacting very frequently with our legislators around these topics. And we've listed just two references there where staffing was talked about, chronic absentee was talked about, because obviously these are big issues that we obviously, you as a board, need to contribute to. So that's kind of a high level. And Chair Robinson, I'll turn to you to see if you would like us to move through the set, the full presentation before you do questions, or if you want to pause at each section.
I do think we should have the full frame and the full presentation.
Okay, I think so as well. And so with that, I'm going to turn it to my wonderful colleagues here. And I believe next up, we're, Dr. Kelly Foster is going to talk to you a little bit about some ongoing efforts that can support what we're seeing.
Good morning. Good morning. Let's see, Meredith, I think you can take us through to the next slide, please. So I do want to repeat some positive news that Rhonda shared with you. We did have twenty-three schools exit comprehensive support and improvement status in twenty twenty-three. So we're extremely proud of those schools and their hard, continuous improvement efforts. We did not have any new schools identified for CSI one, which that would be a school being the bottom five percent, or CSI two, which would be a graduation rate below eighty because as Rhonda mentioned earlier, Senate Bill one fifty-eight of twenty twenty prevents the department from identifying CSI schools every year. The federal law, ESSA, says you must identify CSI schools at least once every three years. And until Senate Bill one fifty-eight, twenty twenty went into effect, we identified CSI schools every year. So we are not eligible to do that again into the fall of twenty-five. What I will tell you is that we have twenty-six schools out there that if we were able to identify CSI schools, would have fallen in the bottom five percent of all schools. And so I have reached out to those principals and those superintendents of those schools directly to let them know, you know, you would have been CSI if the, if the state law allowed us to identify you. Let me help you, you know, talk about where you would have been. So just to put that out there, we did have two schools that had been TSI, which is a subpopulation performing as poorly as the bottom five percent. And under ESSA, if you are TSI for five, for three years and do not exit that status, you roll into CSI. So we did have two schools this year that came from TSI status into CSI status. And you may be familiar, before ESSA, TSI schools were referenced as focus schools. And so and so you could have been focused forever. Uh, so one of the positives of ESSA is that if you are a TSI school and you have a subpopulation performing as poorly as the bottom five percent, this really puts some pressure on you to move that student subgroup and, and to provide those, um, extra efforts. So that is definitely a positive of ESSA. Um, one of the, um, pieces or consequences, I guess, to Senate Bill one fifty-eight, uh, is since we didn't identify any additional CSI schools this year, uh, because of that law, that did free up some of my staff. So we are doing some, um, additional efforts this year around the TSI work. And, um, we actually have an ABR out there that's titled the Kentucky Education Recovery Fund that we wrote this year that you all approved specifically for that TSI work. So hopefully, uh, we will see some state funding moving forward. Because right now, all of the school improvement work is federally funded. Next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit to you about, uh, what we're doing with our TSI schools. So since the data was released, um, publicly October thirty-first, I have had a TSI webinar with all of the TSI school principals and those superintendents and talking to them a little bit about what it means to be TSI and what are the federal requirements of that. All schools in Kentucky complete a school improvement plan, but if you are a TSI school, there are some additional requirements, um, in your school plan to really talk about and laser in how you're going to help that subpopulation in your group. So we did a webinar, and, um, within that webinar, we offered up support from the department. Uh, one of the key pieces to know about TSI and the difference between that and CSI is CSI, you, you're required to get some assistance. So TSI, they have to volunteer for that. So I met with those TSI principals, uh, as well as their superintendents via webinar. And so we've got about forty schools, um, out of a little over two hundred that have responded that they want some assistance. And, um, the, the last bullet on this slide shows you, uh, what that work looks like. So over the last couple of weeks, we have been working with those schools to, uh, schedule two-day reviews. So I have staff that will be going to those schools that have volunteered for assistance, and they'll be doing a two-day review of the curriculum and instruction practices in those schools. And then, uh, we will be going over that review with them, and we will provide them some education recovery staff that will work with them to kind of deconstruct that two-day review and put intentional focus on the improvement priorities that were identified in that review. And from that, then we'll work with them to develop a thirty, sixteen, ninety-day plan, uh, that focuses on those improvement priorities. And then additional staff will come in based on the needs of the school to provide some individualized professional learning. And you see there different types of, of work, if that's through data analysis or MTSS or leadership development or PLC development, just really, really what we see in the review will determine what type of professional, um, learning activities are, are provided to them. And, um, I, I just want to, you know, reiterate again that it is disappointing that, you know, we know we have those twenty-five or twenty-six schools out there that would have been in the bottom five percent, that were not, uh, not allowed to serve this year. But we did reach out to them. A few of them have reached back out to us, and they'll receive the same type, um, of support as well. And when, when we get to questions, I'll be glad to take any about our school improvement efforts.
Thank you, thank you, Kelly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I would like to begin by focusing on some of the larger instructional implications that have come forward from you, the members of the board, as well as discussions, um, at United We Learn and also advisories that, that we meet with more regularly. And so one of the important things, and Meredith, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, um, you have said, and we are working to invest in Kentucky teachers and administrators to increase student access to high-quality, standards-aligned, grade-level instruction. And so that is a part of your call to action in addition to the promotion of high-quality instructional resources. And so that not only is a part of your call to action, that's also part of the KDE strategic plan. And we are working with pilot districts in reading and writing, mathematics, and science to field test some of our guidance and resources around developing local curriculum that would include a primary tier-one high-quality instructional resource. And so it's been very helpful for us to inform our guidance, but also capture those bright spots to be able to encourage others across the state to make that investment in those high-quality resources. And right alongside of that, we know that you cannot just provide educators with access to a resource without the professional learning to be able to utilize it effectively and implement it to the good of the students within their classrooms. And so we also have an ABR that would include professional learning. That was a part of your, um, budget request, your legislative agenda that Brian, of course, speaks to as well, to encourage state-level funding for professional development, um, that we have not had in, in some years. And then lastly, this one is a bit selfish on my part, but I feel like we are constantly working to improve communication around the available resources that we have. It's always a bit surprising to us that people don't know that kystandards.org exists, and we work very closely with the Division of Communications to promote our resource. We have newsletters. But I think the more we can be talking about the free resources that we have available, the better that is for the, the field and knowing that those resources even exist and that we have dedicated staff to be able to provide supports in the different content areas and, and around standards implementation. So the next slide, you know, historically, I think that a lot of the focus, at least of our grant programs, has been around intervention support specifically. So one thing that we're working to do, um, as a result of our state-level data, is to promote the strengthening of tier-one instruction. And you often hear people say you can't intervene your way out of tier-one instruction problems. And so, um, one of the things that we've worked to do, not only with our pilot districts, but in, um, conversations with local superintendents, with district curriculum instruction leads and administrators, is to think about moving from vision to impact. And so we spend a lot of time in providing supports around a common instructional vision. And I think some people think that that's, um, it can, that can be an unnecessary part of the process, but we would argue that is the foundational step. And I think we've seen that with United We Learn and your efforts to promote that vision and the moonshot goal that's been established. So for us, this is really about establishing an instructional vision for a specific content area. So what does high-quality ELA instruction look like across our district? What does that look like for mathematics, for science, et cetera? And with that, they can use that vision to winnow down the resources. So if, if they know that there are specific competencies around portraits of a learner, if there are specific goals around project-based learning within a district, we would see that reflected in the curriculum document, and then that helps them to select and find the right fit for the high-quality instructional resource. It's a very important step there, and that would be followed by high-quality professional learning to assist those educators in effectively implementing the local curriculum, including that HQIR. Um, on the next slide, I did want to talk a little bit about why do high-quality instructional resources matter? And, and this, it's really about student experience. And so connecting back to those vibrant experiences, the deeper learning that we want for students, and that is supported by our Kentucky academic standards and specifically the practices that live in each of those four main content areas. But if you, this was based on a study that was done by the New Teacher Project, so TNTP, and it dates back to twenty-eighteen, but I still feel like it was very compelling for us to process. You can see here, based on that study, in a single school year, the average student spends five-hundred-and-eighty-one of seven-hundred-and-twenty available hours on assignments that are not of high quality. And what they meant in that study was that activities or things that they were doing that were not aligned to grade-level standards, grade-level learning. So they may be doing fun things, but if it's not grounded in those academic standards and in that grade-level academic standard experience, then it's not going to be reflected in, in the outcomes for that student. And they do make note that this is particularly significant for students of color, for students who are economically disadvantaged, and that also brings in students who, um, are exceptional and have differing needs. The next slide focuses a little bit on what happens when educators don't have access to that HQIR. So in many cases, they then are, um, for lack of a better word, forced to find a supplemental resource on their own. So they're looking at Google, they're looking at Teachers Pay Teachers, at Pinterest. And when that happens, most of the content from the supplemental online resources live in the depth of knowledge, DOK one and two. Our academic standards are at DOK level three and four. So there's a, a discrepancy. When they're left to have to find their own resources, you know, they may find something that connects to theme, but if they're teaching theme at fourth grade, that resource may actually be more appropriate for grade two, and so then they're not accelerating the students' learning per those grade-level standards. And so I just thought that was a, a very powerful, um, realization, and this was produced by the, by the Fordham Institute. And so I could talk a lot more about that. But if you look at it, that very last column, it says ninety-four percent of the activities did not include DOK four-level thinking at all in those supplemental resources. So that, of course, is, I think, disturbing to all of us, um, and especially those teachers who are wanting to do the right things in the best interest of their students and not really realizing that the resources that they're finding are not meeting the needs of those students. On the next slide, and again, I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I did want to point out a few things about what the research says about access to HQIR. If you look at that first bullet, it says HQIRs that are aligned to state standards can reduce variability in the quality of instruction across classrooms and help boost student achievement. But teachers often do not have resources that are aligned to their state standards. So that kind of goes back to that supplemental resource. So they're looking for things that are standardized, they don't have them, and as a result, there is, um, disparity there. Um, a twenty-seventeen study shows that the effect of learning when using an HQIR is the same as moving an average-performing teacher to one at the eightieth percentile. And then I'm going to skip down to the third bullet from the bottom. Um, students in classrooms that used one HQIR for four consecutive years, and that, we, I don't think we can point to many right now that would, um, meet that need. So they have, they have to have access for four consecutive years. They outpaced comparison students by a margin of thirty-eight percentile points, equivalent to four additional years of learning, just by having access to the high-quality instructional resource that ensures that that student has access to grade-level learning. Um, a twenty-eighteen study illustrated that teachers using HQIRs engage students in the mathematical practices at a significantly higher rate than teachers who do not have access to that curriculum. And that's important because, as I mentioned earlier, it's those practice standards that really allow for the deeper learning, that allow for critical thinking, effective communication, all of the things that we're wanting to promote as part of that portrait of a learner, either in a statewide or a local approach. So to me, that, that was something significant to bring forward for your review. And then lastly, as, as I've noted, providing teachers with that, with a set of resources without the professional learning does not have the same impact on student achievement. So if we're going to make an investment in the HQIR, we also must make that investment in the professional learning so that it is, um, supporting both teachers and students across the system. On the next slide, um, this is just, uh, some impact that we've learned from our pilot districts. So we had nine districts who participated in our reading and writing pilot. Um, we have three, we had some additional funding and were able to work with three districts for mathematics, then we have five districts in a science pilot. And so what, what they have shared with us is that access to that HQIR, um, allows the teacher to free up their time to leverage what is truly engaging. So that's when they can start thinking about those vibrant experiences. How can we allow students to engage in learning in a deeper way? How can they look to that application? And the HQIRs off, offer supports for differentiation as well, so they can better meet the diverse needs of the students who are in their classrooms. Um, it also raises expectations about what students must know and do at that particular grade level. You know, sometimes I think we can have a tendency to, to bless their hearts to the degree that we don't even provide them or afford them access to grade-level learning. And if they are not afforded access to grade-level learning, they're never going to reduce that achievement gap because they're not granted the experiences that would allow them to have that mastery learning. Um, and then for the student experience, it does build necessary background knowledge of the world. Many of them are known for their rich text or rich experiences. If you think about, and Dr. Todd, I don't know how familiar you are with Open SIED and some of the new units that have been released, but one of my colleagues who serves as, uh, professional learning coordinator, she has said over and over again that looking at the Open SIED units makes her want to go back to her science classroom and, and really dig in with that with her own students. Um, so I think that's very powerful. And, and lastly, it increases their interest and confidence in learning as they're developing those new skills. And many of our pilot districts have said they will have parents contact them to learn more because their students are going home, and when they're asked, what are, what have you learned today? What have you been doing today? They can answer the question with specifics about what's happening in class, and they're excited about those experiences. And so all of that was very encouraging to us. And I want to briefly talk about some, some of the specific content areas, and I, I will be very honest in saying there is more here on our reading and writing side, on our literacy slide, because frankly, we have more funding supports to be able to make investments in this specific area, much more so than we have currently for mathematics and science. And so you're familiar with much of this work, but I did want to point out, um, one of our colleagues in, in OTL, in the Division of Program Standards, has worked to develop an adolescent literacy cohort. So she's actively serving teachers of six through twelve. And listen, my background is also high school, so that it moves my heart to know that we are, we are working to provide additional supports beyond the elementary space to meet the needs of teachers and students, um, in, to becoming improved readers. And then I also wanted to target, um, we do plan to have a Kentucky Reads to Succeed Summer Conference, and it will be for K through twelve educators. We're not going to just narrow that to the, the early literacy experience, and would love for members of the board, board to join us that day. So it is set for June twentieth of twenty-twenty-four. Um, we are finalizing some of the, the specifics around the exact location, but, um, we're very excited to offer both teacher supports that day, but also as an administrator track, and we want that to be free for Kentucky educators. Um, we also have new resources that have been developed, and I wanted to mention just one from this list, the very first bullet, the text-based writing across disciplines. So that's where we are able to hit on some of the supports that are needed for math, for science, for social studies. And so we've collaborated, um, with those specific content area consultants, um, and that was produced by the Division of Program Standards. On the next slide, it goes into some of our mathematics supports, and I just want to hit on, um, a couple things here under the grant opportunities. So the MAF coaching grant is supporting direct job-embedded supports for those schools that have received that grant award, and we are seeing very promising outcomes as a result of the coaching experience. And so we're using that to inform some of our other coaching supports that will be in place in future years. But we also have enough funding to be able to offer many grants, so for mathematics specifically. And, um, based on just voluntary reporting, we do know that it's mathematics where teachers have more access to HQIRs than in some of the other content areas, but that really lives more at the elementary space. So we're trying to have conversations with middle school, with high school educators around the value of that HQIR for the secondary experience as well. Um, and then I wanted to mention too, we have a, do have an exciting partnership with Advanced Kentucky. They, they will be here, I think, following this presentation to talk specifically about computer science today, but they are doing some exciting work with access to algebra and some of the outcomes in that space, and I, I'm sure that that will be part of their presentation at the next board meeting when they do their annual report. Um, but it, it has caused us to think about how we can message for more rigorous learning for middle school and high school students. So what's happening if, sometimes if students don't have access to more rigorous content in middle school, they truly do not have the space in their high school course experience to end up completing a progression that would set them up to succeed at the post-secondary level in those STEM fields. And so I think the more we can talk about the need for more rigorous instruction for math and science in middle school, the better that's going to be for those students at the high school level. Um, and on the next slide, this is where we're really focusing on science. And, and to Rhonda's earlier point, our standards are built around phenomena-based instruction, but it has taken, um, I, I think, some internal learning from our staff as well as the field to be able to identify the needs for instruction in that area. And so we do have a module around phenomena-based instruction. We partnered with, um, AIR, the America Institute for Research, to really build out a Kentucky atlas, and that's not yet published. But what they did, they worked with Kentucky teachers to look for Kentucky-specific phenomena, um, and they were able to take teachers to different state parks. And, I mean, we have rich phenomena that happens in our state in a very unique way. And so we're looking for ways to help teachers know that that exists and help to engage students in some of those experiences. And then we also have a partnership with PIMZER, um, and they have done rich work around building, um, learning networks and specifically some administrator networks. I think, you know, if you, people within our state have had varying levels of, um, experience with networks in the past. networks in the past, and one of the findings from those networks' experiences was that the principal was left out of the loop. And so PIMZER is working very hard to engage principals in that learning for the good of the, the teachers who are within their systems. And then lastly, thank you for your grace. Lastly, if we look at social studies, I wanted to point out just a few of the key modules that we have in place. So we do have a minding the gap module that helps districts to identify and teachers to be able to identify gaps in practice and their current social studies curricula. It is harder to signal quality around high-quality resources for social studies than any other content area. Our standards are quite unique. And so we are working, though, we're in the early stages of discussion around what could a consumer guide look like for the Kentucky Academic Standards for Social Studies? How can we help to signal quality for that content area specifically? So we're very excited to say that work is moving. It's just not moving quite as quickly as some of the other content areas. And then the last thing, because we do not have a consumer guide, the, the resources at the bottom of this slide help at this point to guide folks to what resources, what assignments are best selections to be aligned to our standards for social studies. So there are resources there, just not at the level of reading, writing, and math at this point, but we're, we're on track to, to provide those supports as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, hopefully you all have been fed well by this great presentation. I will be extremely briefed with a couple of comments to complement what you heard. I know Dr. Poe and others have asked about NAEP. Obviously, Rhonda is our key NAEP person. We do have a state coordinator. That's the nation's report card, NAEP Kentucky. When you look at Kentucky's results on NAEP as well as the national reports, our results, you'll see pretty much an alignment in terms of what our performance was on the Kentucky system as well, some of the similar gaps and also areas to celebrate. We're also keeping our mind on the revision of NAEP. Some areas have not been revised in 20 years, particularly with social studies, which is coming up, and civics, which is coming up for revision. And secondly, you heard a lot about strategies. And the big question is, the so what question is, what are you doing to close these gaps? I've heard our three colleagues here talk at length about that. A couple of things I'll mention briefly. The science of reading, that's a huge, huge game changer, especially with our work with letters and what Mickey is heading up. Also, the key thing that I really took away is the discussion of looking at the written curriculum, which is our standards, and for example, looking at science. Well, there's a incongruency, if you will, between how science is taught and the content of science and what we are assessed. We all know when we're looking at students growing and achieving, there has to be an alignment between the written curriculum, the standards, what's being taught in the classroom, then obviously the assessed curriculum, the Kentucky assessment. A lot of states don't have this conversation or willing to admit that there is some misalignment. So, so proud of our folks to discuss that. You've heard quite a bit about high-quality instructional resources and science, how that's a huge game changer. And lastly, you've heard Dr. Foster talk about CSI and TSI, and efforts we're utilizing to move and grow all students.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks so much. Very, very helpful. I've asked Meredith if she would pull up slide 14. Mickey, I'd like to just talk about that a little bit, something for you all to think about. As I, as I listen to United We Learn, look at the test results, look at accountability results, and then think about how we translate that into learning and teaching back at our schools. And I, so I was asking myself, as I listen to this, about the adjectives of high-quality and vibrant. And what I'm suggesting on, I think it, maybe I have my number wrong, maybe it's slide 15. Sorry. I didn't know whether it was the number above or the number after the five columns. I'm wondering if you and your team could think about, and maybe we could have more conversation, not today. I don't want another pop quiz that I'm famous for, but I'm wondering if we're not missing a column that helps us understand the learning side, the, the learner. And so for vibrant learning, the United We Learn team has grappled with, they, they haven't come up with their final definition, but they're landing on this notion of vibrant learning is learning that matters to the learner. And that really speaks to me. When people ask me what I think of, when I hear vibrant learning, I think of engaging, challenging, and relevant to the learner. So I'm wondering if we don't, at least in our graphic, need a column that talks about vibrant learning before we talk about improved student outcomes? Have we lost the learner in the graphic? And high-quality takes on its kind of own pedagogical teacher construct? So the person who's engaging in decisions about what high-quality entails is the grown-up in the classroom, but the person who experiences vibrancy is the young person in the classroom? So I, I heard you touch on some things. I had a CAO contact me after High Quality Instructional Resources and said, where's PBE often in this? And, and you know, we're investing a lot in this deeper learning ecosystem about inquiry and vibrant learning experiences for the learner. Personally, I think the antidote to chronic absenteeism is vibrant learning. And I know that sounds super simplistic. I like parsimony, but, but what I believe about that to my very core is that my friend Pam Moran in Virginia always used to say when she was superintendent, she would ask her team, why would kids come to school? Why would kids come to our schools if they weren't legally required to? And that question compels me around the conversation about vibrant learning. And I just wonder if the department might think about how we begin to incorporate that language, which I know we believe in these kinds of large-scale professional learning opportunities. By the way, one last comment, I'm sorry, I held you too long on the question, Mickey, but one last comment is, I believe the same thing for professional development. High-quality professional development is what we offer. Vibrant learning, vibrant professional learning is what we want our, our teachers to receive.
Absolutely. So by sharing out a couple of things, so within each of these components, it's built out much further in the model curriculum framework. And we were sure to include language to address a vibrant learning experience, just a couple plays specifically. So we talk about that in the Common Instructional Vision, and we also include in that section the fact that if a school is utilizing project-based learning and other things, that would be a part of their foundational instructional vision. And then within the definition of HQIR, it explicitly states that it must be based on vibrant learning experiences for students. And so that's where we kind of hit at the meaningful part of it. But I do think on the graphic, especially in that four quadrant, that we can further move the high-quality instruction to allow for vibrant learning for students or meaningful learning experiences. I think we can play with that indicator, because if you see it at a glance, you don't know the, all of the connections that we do make in the larger narrative. And we know that people, educators don't have time probably to read the larger narrative. So I'll take that back to them, and I know that they will be responsive because they believe that to their bones as well.
Right. And I listened for it through the presentation, and I heard it several times. I just didn't see it so much. And you know, we've always laughed at the old joke that the teacher who said, I taught it, is like the salesman who said, I sold it, they just didn't buy it. And so really, the, the learner experience is what United We Learn is how it's going to be uniquely different from what is happening across the United States. And that idea that we begin to understand the students' internalization of instruction as vibrant learning, I think is really important in the narrative.
I'll take that back, for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate the indulgence.
So this has been a very kind of in-depth and insightful presentation that says, you know, okay, so what next? What now? What, what did we learn in the process of reviewing, collecting and reviewing student performance data and other indicators of quality? Some of this is really, I mean, we, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot going on in the, in the department. What is it that excites you as leaders of the staff here, the resources here? I'm looking for, is there, is there one lever that we are not, that we are missing that would help our districts and our teachers improve student attendance? As an example, what's, what's not here that, that you wish were here?
I'll add one thing. I think it's so important because data can be so overwhelming. There are so many pieces to look at. I think it becomes very important as districts lead the work that they look at how this data fits within what their, their goals are, what they're working toward for the vibrant experiences they're creating. And then what do they have that fills out a bigger picture? You know, this, I think, is a piece of a district and a school's story, but it is their story to communicate. And I think we can help with the understanding of the piece that flows from the state, but I think so much of this work comes back to that community focus you've been talking about. What are those levers actually right there in your community? You know your students better than anything we can pull in data from the state level. You know your parents, you know your businesses. I think that what we've created with United We Learn is a landscape for that conversation to be supported. But I think those levers of that community engagement become very, very important. And this is just a piece of it. It is not the end-all, be-all. It is a piece of it that's meeting certain legal requirements, but it's important that people are able to tell the positives and the growth pieces in their own story. And, you know, I have a great team that try to help at the district level with the information that can help people begin to build their own story. But I think creating their own story becomes a critical part of it.
And I would just say, as the next piece of that is, you know, really continuing to encourage through the United We Learn piece, but not only do they need to tell their story, they, they need to own that as well. You know, districts really need to look at this snapshot data as well as their formative data that they are, you know, gaining daily in the classroom, and really dig deep and think about what are their needs with specific groups of students or specific schools, and really embrace the resources that Mickey's talking about that are out there to move their students forward, really analyzing that data and having some intentional conversations through the leadership level at districts and schools. Here's where we are, you know, here's where we want to be, what are our goals? How do we get there? What do we need to implement, embrace, change, tweak, continue to really own that, own the data and own the school improvement processes?
Well, Kelly, I'm really sorry you said that because it was, I mean, this was, this was like, okay, something is worrying me. And I, I really do think the differential performance among these groups of students that have been, that are just downright historic, as though it's, you know, it's, it's baked in. I really do want to see us find the way to make a breakthrough, and maybe it's finding more work that increases community voice and informing the demand, the voice of demand in the community that is going to be an added component of addressing these differential, these, you know, group identified. I mean, you don't even have to give the test to, you know, it's going to show up over and over and over. And, you know, I just have to give voice to a bit of, you know, it's like, what else? Something else has to happen. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I got questions on some of that, of where we are with, with that. So I've got a lot of questions here, but we went through a lot of material, so it's not there. I'm going to go back to one of the, first of all, I guess, on the slides, when Lou picked that up, I always wonder why we say high-quality? Why isn't it just quality? Because I think that that's become another catchword. I mean, it's either quality relates to the curriculum or it doesn't. A district either does it or doesn't. You know, they'll say, well, we got quality. No, they don't. You know, high-quality, it's just like the Ford's, or the one that's, you know, deeper learning, it's really deep learning, but we say deeper learning, and so it's like we're going to the next step. We've just never made quali, we've never hit quality standards to say, you know, high-quality. But that's, that's really not a question. That's just me opinion there on that. Kelly, in relationship, you said we had 26 other schools that are approximately that would be identified from CS, from TSI to CSI, but we had 23 come out. Would that just be replacing those because these five moved up? Or they were in the bottom five, they moved up, and then these ones fall, fell down?
So those 26 wouldn't come from TSI. They were just 26 schools out there that would have been in the bottom 5% of elementary, middle, or high. But because of Senate Bill 158, we can't identify CSI once every three years.
Right. But I, when I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, these ones moved up, so these ones fell down. So the numbers seem to be, you know, close together. That's why I was just wondering.
No, you're thinking about, years ago, we used to replace, like if so many came out and it replaced it. No, this would not be a replacement factor. We generate where the bottom 5% cut is, that's a number. We generate that, then we say, how did schools compare to that cut line? And so there were 26 identified that would have dropped below the line across elementary, middle, and high.
But you have to have 5% each year, so you're gonna, you're gonna have to have that number.
But you still have to have that number of where the five is.
I mean, these ones improved. They, they may not have approved, but because they were stagnant, they fell down in there because the other ones went up.
And, you know, the early sort of warning, in a way, is just to say, this is what would have happened. Can we be some supports? So we can avoid that happening, you know? Can we get this moving?
I just don't want the people walking out, well, 26 got worse. They didn't necessarily got worse. A cut score is what makes that.
Right. It's an annual cut.
Okay. Because there are some groups that listen to this, and they'll say, there's 26 schools doing poorly based on that, and it's just, there's a replacement in that because it, it depends on that cut score where you cut.
Well, there are 26 out there that fall in the bottom 5% of all elementary, all middle.
Well, and there's always going to be, there's always going to be.
There's always going to be.
That's what I'm saying. But I mean, it's just not like, you know, okay. The other question I had was, because we talked about the Kentucky standards and so forth, and we talked about TSI and CSI schools. So what I was wondering as a board member is, what is the correlation of what we're doing with Tier One and Tier Two instruction when we're, when, when your department goes in? Are we looking at what they're doing in relationship to what Mickey's, the curriculum over here is? And going back to that quality material, the resources that they're using, because there are a lot that's not using resources because they might use one resource over another because it's easy. You know, it's more comprehensive, but it's not really targeted for the needs. The one thing that I heard each time there was, if we were targeting the student at their zone of proximity, at their grade level, we're going to see major increases. But are we looking at, are those schools adapting their curriculum in relationship to Tier Two and Tier Three instruction and not just looking at, well, if I was on fourth grade, I'm on fourth grade, when I'm really on third grade individually? Are we looking to see what they're doing and adapting that particular criteria? Or is it just, these are techniques?
We're looking individually at each CSI school. Most of the CSI schools we first entered do, do not even have a curriculum. And so my office works very closely with Mickey and her team and to make sure that my staff that are working in the lowest-performing schools have the knowledge and the skills that she is promoting to all schools in Kentucky. So we've got lots of CSI schools now participating in letters. I have lots of my ER staff going through that training as well. So we're trying to make sure that our lowest-performing schools are also receiving those same supports that she's trying to push out statewide.
And that, that match up, because it goes to my question that, and this is my last one, I'm sorry. Because what Dr. Wood said is that, you know, it seems like we've got these Kentucky standards out here, and the teaching and the assessment isn't lining up. So my question is, is the, is it because those schools aren't following those standards in relationship to that for the assessment? Or is it just poor teaching that's not lining up to the assessment?
Specifically, my schools?
Well, I'm, I'm just talking for your whole group over general. I'm not targeting you. You know, back to that, that question, because it said that, you know, we, we're teaching, but we're not assessing what we're teaching. So is our assessment not aligned? Or the teaching and the standards, is it poor teaching? Or is it, or is it the standards are not aligned with the assessment?
The assessment is aligned to the standards. We have to independently verify for the federal government, the assessment and the standards are aligned. I think it's more about the implementation of those standards and, you know, are we expecting a high-level sort of understanding from students? from students about the content standards?
So then when we go into a CSI or TSI school, that's what I'm get, trying to get at.
There's a disconnect most of the time in low performing schools that they're not teaching the standards. They don't have a curriculum in place.
Correct. Okay.
And if I may just add one key reminder. So we had four new sets of standards that were approved and became effective in 2019 before the pandemic. And so I think a lot of the work that would have been done early on around standards implementation was disrupted. And so now we're making up some of those professional learning efforts and supports around standards alignment because there was that gap as a result of COVID.
And Dr. Paul, I'll add this as well that you just saw demonstrated today. It's the acknowledgement that you have an assessment. But however, when we look at science, we're not approaching it in an integrated fashion. So it also has to start with the recognition of how we're actually teaching. Getting back to what Associate Commissioner Sim said, it's the implementation of the standards and ensuring that there is full alignment.
Well, the reason to ask, I mean, it goes back to what our chair was saying that, you know, we see the same groups year after year. So it would be interesting to see, just like we did in letters, we, we're making significant gains in reading based on what we're doing in letters that we would have a similar thing in math and science. So we would see those same significant gains through our professional development leading forward. I'm just kind of waiting for another letters version for science and mathematics as we get from reading because we're seeing gains. And where do we get to on that? That's, that's the basis of the question. Is so that we can see those subgroups starting to move forward or move up? Because that's the.
And we do know that you share our urgency, sense of urgency.
I think mine are fast. Kelly, thank you for throwing the life preserver to the CSI schools, even though it's not required. That's appreciated. How many of those, do they have an opportunity to come back and say, hey, yeah?
Oh, any day, anytime.
Okay. All right. Same thing for the TSI. There's no timeline.
So there's 224 TSI schools. We heard back from probably about 37 of those.
But they still, there's not a timeline on that. They can still say, okay, we discussed it. We need help. Okay, that's, that was that one. That was fast.
That's what we do.
Nikki, I love going into schools or anywhere I'm out in public. And one of the things that I always ask a group of kids, I ask, what do you like most about school? What subjects are your favorite? Why are they your favorites? Then I ask, what do you like the least and why? I was with a group of fifth graders. Two of them, both girls, said math is what I like least, which hurt my heart because I thought, oh, we're right there with, you know. And I said, why? And they said, because we already know what the teacher is teaching and we're being the teachers in the classroom, the teacher assistants in the classroom. And I'm not throwing the teacher under the bus because I realize this juggling is difficult. We're doing a good job of our Tier One and our Tier Two, obviously in our elementary classrooms because we're showing improvement in our assessment scores. Now I'm concerned about our fifth graders who are moving into middle school who are not going to show higher level improvement unless we're challenging our students at a more advanced rate. I don't want to take the steam out of our OCIS presentation. But is there something for our fifth graders? Because that has bothered me.
Yes. And so I think that a lot of our sort of open access supports cover the full elementary band. And, you know, and when we think about mathematics specifically, we have a great partner, I think, in the Kentucky Center for Mathematics, and they focus a lot on elementary instruction. And so we're looking to other partners, such as Advanced Kentucky and others in the mathematics space, to try to build out supports beyond what we have the capacity to provide on kystandards.org. And so it's, you know, it has been fascinating because we've had the opportunity to attend two of the math summits across the state. There was one in Central Kentucky and one in Western Kentucky. And overwhelmingly, those math educators and teachers were expressing some of the similar concepts. We need high quality professional learning. We need access to quality resources. And so we're trying our best to provide supports in those specific areas so that we can begin to get more into the weeds, like more into the granular approach of student engagement and what instruction looks like aligned to grade level learning. And so that is the constant thing that I think weighs upon all of us to find those supports that will best meet the need. But much of it is the fact that it's individualized for the student experience. And so that's why we're also promoting the screening, the diagnostic assessment, so that we can really drill down to what those individual student needs are and then respond with their individualized learning plan, which would begin at grade six, to begin to account for what does meaningful instruction, what does authentic instruction really look like for that individual student? And how can we better adapt their learning progression to really engage their interests, their desires? And frankly, their perceptions about what they may or may not be good at or what they may or may not enjoy at a given time.
Is, are there any algebra programs for fifth graders? Another sixth grader.
I know that Anthony Myers, the Executive Director of Advanced Kentucky, will be presenting earlier. If we can press hold on that question? Because I, you know, for us, I think we have examples of standard the line instruction, what, what that can look like in a, in a sample library that already exists. But in terms of large scale supports, I think we are reliant upon our partners to help to inform some of that work moving forward.
I don't want to just accept we're doing well. I want to accept we're doing very well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Dr. Todd?
Two quick things. I know we made an investment in a project-based learning contract. Is anybody looking at the effect of project-based learning on absenteeism? Whether or not, because there's some I was involved a long time ago, where we did some hands-on learning and the vibrancy of the educational experience was better. But it might be good to see if there are some segments where absenteeism isn't as bad and see why. The other question I have, a very general statement or question. I've been on the board quite a while and watched budgeting for quite a while in this state. I'd like to see what our resource allocation is for math and science, education, for CTE and for REE. Because I've seen a profound increase in CTE. And so we fall in love with it and it's really, really good. We lift up a lot of students who I think went through high school, didn't find the kind of jobs that they could find now with what skills that they're learning. But I still think when I hear that we just don't have the resources in math and science, as I've heard the last few years, we're missing the boat with some children in this state who have the ability to be higher order thinkers that we're not getting instruction in front of. We've got teachers, they could be higher order teachers, who we're not giving the resources to. And if we're going to choose to not invest in that area, then let's just decide, will we just simply follow other people's ideas?
Right.
People come to Kentucky, in many cases for cheap land, cheap labor. We got to change that and we are changing it some. There's a lot of really good stuff going on in ad hoc basis with grants and contracts. But if we have a grant and a contract that shows we're making progress, why don't we invest in those things more so than while we're investing in them? To try to lift up people to a higher level so that our best talent doesn't leave the state and become experts elsewhere. Let's try to do something to entice them and give them some more vibrancy. And learning is hard, as you said yesterday. Sometimes we may learn too easy. And then they take an occupation that's going to be a level that they could attain, but they could need to aspire to be the next level up. That's just my soapbox.
Well, thank you for that because it's always challenging to, and this has been a very provocative presentation and discussion, as I suspect the next one will be as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We should put, to be continued. Please, I'd like to invite. I think we want to. I'd like to invite the Advanced Kentucky Director, Anthony Mairst, the Advanced Kentucky Program Director, Monique Rice, KDE Deputy Commissioner and Chief Equity Officer, Thomas Woods Tucker, to, and Dr. Mickey Ray to come back to the table. This is, this is, I guess, the segue. We can segue from our previous discussion looking at our challenges and opportunities to a more in-depth discussion looking at the computer science education in the state. So Dr. Woods Tucker, are you going to introduce this item?
Yes. I first want to say a great deal of, express a great deal of gratitude for the opportunity for this group here to provide the Kentucky Board of Education and all of our folks' computer science program update. And I really want to show my thanks to our folks with Advanced Kentucky, folks at code.org to help expand computer science here in the Commonwealth. And also know various, I've had a few conversations with various board members, particularly Dr. Todd, about how we can continue to work to expand computer science. But in that expansion, open opportunities for many of our underserved groups. I'm glad to see Anthony here. Hopefully this summer we can really nail a bigger project in terms of partnership. And lastly, the intentionality to close opportunity gaps. And they have some data here, especially along the agenda lines.
Fabulous.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Sean Jackson. I'm in the Office of Education Technology and I'm tagged as the K-12 Computer Science Lead. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. And it is very apt that we're presenting after this data, after the conversations about providing great opportunities to our students. But also we're presenting this topic during Computer Science Education Week in the state. We're also presenting this one day after our Student Technology Leadership Program had Level One competition yesterday where hundreds of projects were presented across the state to talk about what they're doing in their own schools and in their communities using technology to advance, to advance their learning, but also to advocate for causes and to develop and iterate their own types of technologies. And just like was indicated before, the best marketing tells a story. The best data tells a story. And our data story behind computer science is one that shows growth and speaks to teacher and district resiliency. We know that for over 30 years, the Kentucky Office of Education Technology and the Kentucky Education Technology System has been a national leader in accessing and integrating education technology tools into our instructional practice in the state. And we've done that through our development of strategic partnerships. And this is one of those strategic partnerships with Advanced Kentucky and code.org and other national and state-level stakeholders to promote and computer science as an academic and workforce priority. And this relevant statute that's up on the screen was presented and it set the Kentucky academic standards as adopted in our state. And it set the definition of computer science for the state of Kentucky based on a national definition for the K-12 computer science framework as an academic discipline that encompasses the study of computers, algorithmic processes, including their principles, hardware and software designs, applications, networks, as well as their impact on society. And so while programming is definitely an essential part of the computer science curriculum, computer science in our schools goes well beyond coding. And we have elective and integrated course standards that span the K through 12 spectrum. Now, with support from partners like code.org, Advanced Kentucky and our local school districts, we launched out on a course of action that tried to remove the systemic barriers to providing these courses in our school districts, but also students accessing these courses. The approval for computer science code certification is probably the nation, it is unique in the nation, but it's also our number one mechanism by which teachers access the permission to teach computer science in the school district. And with any type of high school certification background, they can participate in these high quality or quality professional learning programs in computer science and be able to teach any course in computer science. Also, the Computer Science and Information Technology Academy, the CSIT as we call it, continues to fund these industry-recognized certifications and AP exams for all computer science students in the state. And we have those participant numbers growing annually. CTE pathways have undergone several rounds of revisions, but we continue to develop those types of things as new technologies emerge and new priorities take shape with our workforce. We prioritize computer science learning at K-8 because we know that that, when we talk about equity of access, that's where we lose the most students. We heard somebody speak about the fifth grade girls not being engaged or not liking math anymore because they were. We lose students at the sixth through eighth grade in the STEM disciplines, specifically girls. And we still have opportunities and we prioritize those opportunities for CS learning at our K-8 level, specifically in the middle school. And activities like our Student Technology Leadership Program that I mentioned earlier, it's now in its 30th year and it is the premier homegrown project-based learning organization in the state of Kentucky. So if you've never been to the state event, come on down. I know, I know almost all of you have, but it's a great time. Now, next, through the reduction of these barriers, Kentucky has achieved seven of code.org's 10 policy points to make computer science foundational, with local boards being empowered to have computer science count as an elective math or science credit with a few caveats. So we have achieved a lot of the policy points that code.org says, this is your state saying CS is foundational. And it definitely is in the state of Kentucky. Next, with Senate Bill 193 of 2020, the General Assembly continued laying out a path of progress requiring that we annually report on access to and implementation of high school computer science coursework. Computer science continues to be a Kentucky Education Technology System a priority funding area, and it's incorporated into our annual budget as a part of our shared services to local school districts. As you can see, 22,345 unique computer science students based on our most recent data. Because that Kentucky revised statute, we have to tell them, where are students taking this? Who are the students taking these courses? How many? And it helps us identify these emerging trends, persistent barriers that we continue to try to mitigate. And then we highlight some future-ready programs and try to have that reflect the priorities of the United We Learn program and the other priorities of the Kentucky Department of Education. And that represents about a 10% increase from the time we started collecting data in 2019 of the number of students engaging in this coursework. But we are not done yet. We continue to identify areas of growth and new iterations of practice. We continue to change the expectation of how computer science standards are met. And we equip districts with the tools needed to build their pipeline for K-12 computer science. We are continuing to modernize pathways for computer science as set forth by our comprehensive K-12 computer science state plan. And it's also informed from our annual report. Now, IBM's recent slogan has been, trust is our license to operate. Well, with computer science relevance is our license to operate. We need to make sure that our pathways and our course structures are not frozen in time. They have to be agile and adaptable to the change, to the demands of the industry needs at this time. And so, as you can see, cybersecurity, data science, machine learning, artificial intelligence. artificial intelligence, automotive, or automation, generative design and infrastructure, all of these topics are still priorities for modern industry. And those, and those Industry 4.0 skill demands are pervasive across several industry sectors, making sure that students are equipped with the modernized technologies and know how to use that in their everyday practice. So we have been able to succeed and experience growth in computer science because of the continued investment in the Kentucky Education Technology System budget. But also, you see all the names that are listed on this item in your, your board agenda. It is because it is truly an agency-wide conversation and make sure, we are making sure that all stakeholders are involved in the conversation as we continue to have this moving forward. We appreciate our partnership with Advanced Kentucky, code.org, and other national organizations like the Computer Science Teachers Association. But now I'm going to pass it on over to Monique.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm Monique Rice. I am the Program Director for Advanced Kentucky's Computer Science Initiatives. And I'm going to do a bit of an update on Advanced Kentucky Computer Science and as well as where we're going to start targeting our efforts as we move forward. So basically, what we do at Advanced Kentucky's Computer Science Initiatives is we provide professional learning for teachers in grades K through 12. We're a partner with code.org as a regional partner. We also provide pathways for teachers to receive that approval code for computer science. So any teacher who is previously certified in any content area can go through our training, specifically our code.org CSP, Computer Science Principles and CSA, Computer Science A, training, and earn the ACS, which will allow them to teach computer, any computer science or IT course. And we assist districts in developing a K-12 computer science plan through our partnership with CS4All. So a little bit more about our partners. Our biggest partner, of course, is the Kentucky Department of Education Computer Science and IT Academy, CSIT. And our second-largest partner is code.org. Again, I mentioned that we are a regional partner. But we also have partnered with other organizations, working with them to provide other programs. CS4All, we are a partner with them. iCodeKY is what we called our partnership with Apple Learning, and we provide professional learning in, for Apple Development Swift Courses in grades four through 12. Somerset Community College, we partnered with them and in larger part with Greater KCS to provide computer science plus additive manufacturing pathway for teachers and students. The ESEP logo, I think that's what that's supposed to be that I can't see because that color didn't come out right. We have recently been accepted as a team for ESEP. And what ESEP does is really starting to look at our state and a regular other state, there are 37 states that are part of ESEP, and looking at where we're movement, where we're doing in terms of broadening participation in computer science throughout the state of Kentucky. And I've also mentioned CSTA Kentucky, which is Teacher Organization for Computer Science Teachers, especially at most levels, the teachers who are teaching computer science are usually long rangers in their high school. There's no computer science department at the high school level. There's no computer science teachers. That's their full-time gig at the elementary and middle school level. So in order to provide that network for those teachers, we have been bolstering, we're trying to get some teachers to take over the job of CSTA Kentucky, our state organization. So a little, just a little bit of data before I talk about some other things. Since 2020, we've had 161 teachers throughout 121 schools that have been trained in additive manufacturing. So that's that program with Somerset Community College. They're mostly high school teachers, but we do have some teachers at elementary and middle school levels who have gone through this additive, introductory additive manufacturing course. We've had 133 teachers earn the Approval for Computer Science, which allows the high school teachers to teach any CSIT course regardless of their initial certification. And we've had 85 currently, as of the time I did that slide, it's gone up since then, 85 active members of CSTA Kentucky, the state affiliate for Computer Science Teachers Association. Moving from there, taking a look at the demographics of students that are taking a computer science course versus the statewide representation, you notice that these bars are almost the same length. And this is good. This is basically based on cultural racial groups. So on average, we're fairly compare, our comparison between the students according to this particular demographic, African-American, Hispanic Latino, Asian, and white students. It's not a perfect match, but it's actually very close to the actual demographics of the students. So the yellow bar on top is computer science students and the orange bars on the bottom is all students. And the not listed is all the other groups. They were too small to fit in one of the other four groups. What we need to do then is look at the gender gap because there is a significant gender gap in computer science. While we're doing a lot of great work, we want to make sure that no, that our female students are not being left behind and left out. Sean mentioned earlier that we lose most of our female students in STEM in middle school and late elementary. Early elementary, they're on top of things. They're just as interested in science and technology as anybody else is. But once they get to fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they start to drop out. And when they're in high school, they have fairly ingrained ideas that I'm not supposed to be doing this, I'm not interested in doing this, I don't want to do this. And those that want to are feeling the peer pressure to not do it. And I am a reform mathematics high school teacher, so this is something that is very near and dear to my heart. Supporting and participating in programs aimed at increasing female participation in STEM fields is something that we need to pay more attention to. Having clubs like Girls Who Code and other things will help us address this gender distribution. When we look at the students taking computer science, as of last year, 38% were female as opposed to 62% being male. As you probably could guess, that does not match the gender distribution of the students in our state. So this is definitely something that we at Advanced Kentucky, and we know, working with CSIT Academy, that going, we're going to be working directly to address. We believe that computer science is foundational. We believe that students should be taking computer science often. We believe that all students should take it, and it should start early. Now, it's important to note that when we talk about taking computer science and making it foundational, that we're not just talking about coding, although coding is a big part of it. We're not just talking about writing programs. We're also talking about those things that lead into those programs. So on our next slide, we talk a little bit about what we mean, what computer science could look like outside of a computer science classroom. And we've got six areas here, agriculture, healthcare, law, art and design, education and manufacturing, and areas within them for which computer science is important. When we talk about computer science skills, we're talking about things like problem solving, critical thinking, creativity. We're also talking about things, understanding an algorithm, which is basically being able to solve a problem, understanding what abstraction means, understanding what variable means. And for the math teachers in the audience, some of those words are familiar, like algorithm and abstraction and variable. This is where computer science can complement other content areas. One of the other things we're going to focus on, and this is the third major area that I'm going to mention in this presentation, is modernizing our computer science pathways. The thing about computer science is it's always changing continuously. This time last year, no one had heard of ChatGPT. And now that's all anybody can talk about. We really need to be flexible in our computer science pathways. Really, really hard to do, but we need to try to look at making these computer science pathways as current, as relevant, and as flexible as possible as other technologies become invented. What should we do in the, in the school level, K-12, to make sure that these students are better prepared? One area I think that we should look at is we should be looking at making sure that as many ATCs as possible offer computer science pathways. When we look at the ATCs and RCA's offering computer science pathways now, we have 61% that don't offer and 39% that do. So these, there are lots of reasons why these pathways are not being offered. But it was just an interesting thing to me as I was researching that maybe we should look at ways, this is an opportunity for us to get computer science courses in front of more students.
Yeah, and I'm going to add to that is it is truly an opportunity, especially when you consider a lot of small school districts, they lean on their area technology centers or their regional career academies. And so this is just another avenue that we could possibly look into, providing access to these types of things. But we also know that participation in CTSOs like Technology Student Association or state-level organizations like STLP, this is how a lot of students are gaining their access and exposure to career and technical disciplines. Because, let's face it, a very small high school may not have the availability for these diverse programs. And so we, we truly look at this as an opportunity for growth.
All right, so wrapping things up, I wanted to mention our Coding at the Capitol Event in September. This was an event that we had at the state Capitol during the meeting, convening of the interim. During, thank you. Words fail me. So there's pictures up there. We presented an award to Senator Givens. We had students doing a student showcase to show what they're doing in their classes regarding computer science. We had Cameron Wilson, the president of code.org, give a short speech. And we also had a legislative roundtable where we met with teachers and students as well as legislators about where we go next. This is just a quick slide on our vision. We really think that computer science is an integral part of the K-12 curriculum, and we want to make sure that all students have the opportunity to learn it.
Wow, thank you so much. That's quite an encouraging update and really appreciate the partnership. Thank you. Questions? Comments? We.
So proud of what's going on here. One of my old adages used to be, if it works, do more of it, do it faster. And penetrate the rest of these opportunities will open up this gender gap, I think, which has been there for years. Still remember, I harken back to a conference before some of you were born where somebody said, "How are you going to get computers in the home?" They were getting it through games. We're going to come up with a game that connects to a TV, and then the family will play that. And then they'll say, "Well, let's add a little bit more intelligence to it," and so forth. Computer science is a way to get into a child's mind while they're sitting with their phone, looking at what everybody else has done, and say, "You can do that too."
Yeah.
And it doesn't take a whole lot of capital equipment and so forth. And so I think what you've done is splendid and an apology for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you again. Look forward to the next update. Oh, I'm sorry, Julie.
If you go back to Slide 15, when it's the beyond the classroom and all the different industries and things, I think that's an area where we lack in communicating to students and parents. Because when you think computer science coding, all you think about is somebody sitting in a cubicle coding.
Right.
And the applications in manufacturing. I mean nowadays, you're running a machine, you need to know that. It may be not the exact coding, may not be basic Pascal or whatever, which I learned to do in college and stuff, but it's the methodology, the algorithms and how to make machines work. I mean, I was, when we were at DASB, the founder of code.org was there. I'm showing the, I think it was the farming equipment. Just how farmers nowadays, I didn't realize that.
The code tractors, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just, we really have to get that message out.
Absolutely.
Coding's just not sitting at a computer coding.
Very good comment. And I will say that this is not exhaustive because what do we always hear? We want to prepare kids for the jobs that don't necessarily exist right now. I saw a job posting for an AI prompt engineer.
I know somebody who's been certified as a prompt.
Okay, prompt engineer. The, the salary that I saw was $200,000 a year. I'm like, what?
Sounds like the perfect retirement job.
That job did not exist before six months ago. So very good comment. And yes, providing the access to those integrations and connections is.
Amazing recruitment tool. There are many folks now looking for.
I'm starting to look up, what exactly?
Last time I checked, there were like 15,000 applications for that position. I mean, it's going to be competitive.
All right.
Are investing in this.
Of course.
Her employer, P and G, invested in her to go learn to get that certification.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Included on today's board agenda is time dedicated to public comment. The segment of time is limited to 10 speakers at a maximum of three minutes each. If there are multiple members of an organization, we encourage that membership of that group to select one person to comment. The public comment period is an opportunity for constituents to address items with the board. While KBE members may ask clarifying questions, they will not respond to comments. So please, we have one person signed up in person. We have Bernie Ayers from Nelson County Schools. Would you please come forward, Mr. Ayers? Did I pronounce your name correctly?
It's Ayers. A-Y-E-R-S.
Oh, I thought it was R. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Please.
So thank you all for having me. Again, I'm Bernie Ayers. I'm from Bardstown, Kentucky, and I'm just here to discuss a little bit about what's going on in the Nelson County School system. So again, I kind of wrote something out, so I'll go ahead and speak if that's okay with you guys.
Please.
So I'm coming to you because I feel I have no other options. I, along with other concerned community members, have contacted the OEA. We've contacted the KDE and we've contacted the KSBA. There appears to be no one interested in helping our school district, our staff, our students, and our families. Everywhere we turn, we receive the same response. Our organization has no authority to help in this situation. Time after time, OEA has told members of our community they will not conduct a formal investigation. In April of 2021, our superintendent shared a vision for future of district facilities in Nelson County. Immediately, one of our current board members connected with a small group of people in a local community where a school would have been closed because of this facilities plan and formed a group called NC Care. NC Care filed a lawsuit against the district to stop the district facilities plan and began a smear campaign against our superintendent and the work going on inside the district. I've included information from a criminal complaint that may be filed against the Nelson County School Board member. This current school board member has sued the Nelson County Schools and removed her name from the lawsuit so she could run for the board. The board member also served as a treasurer of a nonprofit that was organized to stop our school's local facilities plan, which was overwhelmingly approved by 17 of our 20 local planning committee members. The district facilities plan was also unanimously approved by the KDE, KBE, in February of 2022. The board member has continued to be dishonest with educators, students, and families in our district. In June of 2021, House Bill 331 was put into law, amending KRS 156.132, removing authority of the Kentucky Commissioner of Education to remove a board member. I'm asking two things. One, collaborate with state and local legislators to amend KRS 156.132 to give authority back to the KDE to remove unethical board members. I'm also asking Acting Commissioner Education Robin Kinney to work with the KDE staff requesting OEA to conduct an official investigation regarding the corruption of unethical behaviors of our Nelson County School Board of Education as identified in the complaint you're being provided today. This board member's voting history and actions have cost students opportunities, taxpayers millions of dollars, when she led efforts within our board to not move forward with the approved facilities plan. Along with this information, we've included a jump drive and multiple attachments to support everything that's, that's within these pockets. We ask for your support to hold our district school board members accountable because to date, we can't find any bullet item under the board member code of ethics that current member Amanda Rogers-Deaton has not violated.
I do thank you, Mr. Ayers. Appreciate your comment.
And then can I leave these with you guys?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
And it's all the same. The copies are all the same. And I didn't know how many copies to make.
We're good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
It's very warming to see a board act in the way that you guys act and what we see at our school district. So you guys have done an amazing job, and I really appreciate it.
Appreciate you taking the time to come. On that sober note, we will move into the recognition of some very, very impressive awards and award winners. The presentation of the Kevin M. Nolan and Mary Ann Miller Award for Outstanding Public Service to Kentucky Schools. Going to call on Interim Commissioner Kenny and our Chief Communications Officer Tony Konstatman to facilitate this presentation.
Thank you very much, Chair Robinson. Yeah, I'll present from up here. Thank you. I am now very pleased to announce the winner of this year's Kevin M. Nolan, Mary Ann Miller Award winner. This award recognizes a Kentucky Department of Education employee for significant service to Kentucky's public schools and for providing inspiration for education. The award was established in 2009 to recognize Nolan's 18 years of service. Mary Ann Miller was added to the award in 2017 to commemorate the 30 years of service she provided to KDE. In May of 2021, we all lost a wonderful colleague with Mary Ann's passing. Mary Ann is missed by her husband, her family, and friends at KDE whose lives she touched, and we will continue to keep them all in our hearts and honor her memory with this award. I'm especially honored today to be able to present this. Mr. Nolan, Kevin, was the very first call that was made to me when I was hired at the Kentucky Department of Education. And Mary Ann spent many hours counseling and providing guidance and mentoring me personally as many, as many, many people in the Department of Education. And she did this both on professional as well as personal items, so she was always available to us. And both of these individuals were wonderful examples of true public servants, so I'm very honored to be able to do this today. Mr. Nolan is joining us virtually. You'll see Kevin up on the screen. And Mr. Ed Miller, Mary Ann's husband, is with us in person today, so I'm so glad that Mr. Miller could join us. And I'm going to ask both of them to share some words as soon as I announce the recipient today. A selection committee reviewed and rated this year's nominations based upon the following criteria. An individual who focuses on the mission for student proficiency, is an excellent ambassador for the Commonwealth of Kentucky KDE and Kentucky schools, is knowledgeable and productive, and has made an impact in one of the following areas through leadership, customer service, teamwork, and community service, school district, community partners, or parents and coworkers. The winner of this year's award meets all of these criteria and much more. I would like to share what her nominator said about her contributions to education. Quote, "In the eight years of being in her position with KDE, she has provided excellent customer service as she works across the agency to ensure the correct information is being released in a timely manner. She is always working to find ways to build relationships with the media and other stakeholders and arranges interviews with staffs on department initiatives and policies. She has worked tirelessly to help our schools and districts provide excellent communication and promote the great work that takes place across our agency and our classroom. She sees all of KDE's publications as opportunities to illustrate the work the department is doing to serve the Commonwealth's districts and students. Last year, she helped lead our communication efforts through the agency's online newsletter and engagement system with some welcome campaigns and re-engagement campaigns across several KDE offices. As part of this effort, we have more than 1,700 people signed up who have indicated they are interested in becoming a teacher." I am very honored to announce that the winner of this year's Kevin M. Nolan, Mary Ann Miller Award is Jennifer Ginn, Assistant Director. Director in the Division of Communications in the Office of the Commissioner. Jennifer was nominated by her supervisor, our Chief Communications Officer, Tony Konstatman. So at this time, we've all, let's cheer again. So proud of Jennifer, or Jen, as we call her. So we'll go by Jen. And at this time, I'd like to invite any remarks from Mr. Nolan first and then from Mr. Miller.
You're muted.
You're muted. Kevin, I think you're muted.
Still muted.
Still can't hear you.
Is he master muted, maybe?
Need lip readers in the room?
Looking back at Megan.
Megan's not seeing what she can do to help.
Well, let's see if, let's see if Megan can help, and in the interim, we'll have Mr. Miller go first.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Good afternoon, Chair Robinson and the KBE members, as well as the Interim Commissioner Kenny and the KDE staff. It's a pleasure to be here today to acknowledge the Kevin Nolan, Mary Ann Miller Award being presented to another distinguished KDE employee for their significant service to Kentucky's public schools and in providing inspiration for education to the current and future staff and educators of the Commonwealth. I know that Mary Ann was shocked and thrilled when she received an award that was being named after someone that she had held in high regard and was a true friend. This year's recipient, Ginn, if I may, I'm sure is thrilled and also honored with being the recipient. And thank you again for being able to be here and taking this opportunity to present this wonderful award.
Thank you so much. Let's try one more time and see if we can get Kevin's audio to work. No. No, we can't.
It may have been the way he can.
Thank you, Kevin.
I will say that the hardest part was keeping this from Jennifer because she sees everything that we do in the Division of Communications, but I'm not certain that she knew that I invited her family. And did you notice that they are here in the back of the room? Okay, I wonder. So anyways, Jennifer's family, her husband, and her two sons are in the back of the room. They think the youngest one was able to get out of school a little early today to see his mom win the award, so.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you want to come up and say a few words?
Well, yeah, I kind of figured it out. I see everything that goes out of the agency, so when things start missing, I kind of figured stuff out. Or else I'd be in tennis shoes. Thanks, everybody. It's awesome. I worked with Mary Ann. I remember flying monkeys. There's a lot of people that you don't normally see around here who work a lot, and I'm usually one of those. Kind of behind the scenes, I say I'm the monkey pushing the button, but there are a lot of them that help me do my job every day. So just want to thank everybody who's done this and thank you guys for recognizing me.
Do we want to do the pictures now, or do you want to wait until?
Let's.
We'll wait and do them with the other ones as well.
Right, right.
Mr. Miller, if you can wait, we're going to do this other presentation, and then we'll do the photos afterwards.
Thank you so much.
So, Tony, are you going to present the?
We're good to go? Yeah, we're good to move on to Milken?
Yes.
Moving along. So I'm pleased today to have you all meet some esteemed educators. I am here along with Dr. Glipta Zan Greider Jones. She oversees a lot of our awards recognition programs here at the department. And today, we are honored to present the obelisks of our two newest Milken Educator Awards. Kentucky joined the Milken Educator Awards Program in 1993 and has celebrated, as the Milken Family Foundation has awarded more than $1.5 million to 62 Kentucky educators. We are so proud that two of those educators, Mr. Shane Baker, a third-grade teacher at Jennings Creek Elementary in Warren County, and Jacob Ball, a sixth through 12th grade agriculture teacher at Carter G. Woodson Academy in Fayette County, joined this national network of esteemed educators this past year. The Milken Educator Award recognizes outstanding K-12 educators for their quality of teaching, their professional leadership, their engagement with families, and the community, and their potential for even greater contributions to their students, schools, and communities in the future. In two very exciting school ceremonies at the end of October, back-to-back, I must say, they were back-to-back, Shane and Jacob were surprised in front of their students and colleagues with the Milken Educator Award, which includes a $25,000 unrestricted cash prize and the opportunity to attend an all-expenses-paid National Networking Forum. The unique element of the Milken Educator Awards Program is that it is a surprise. Candidates are not nominated, and they do not participate in an application process. We are taking a few moments today to recognize Shane and Jacob, this time in front of their families. Because of the surprise element, we could not invite their families to the ceremonies, and thank them once more for their outstanding work on behalf of Kentucky's children. We at the Kentucky Department of Education and the Kentucky Board of Education are proud of these exceptional teachers and all of the other Kentucky educators who have received the prestigious Milken Educator Award over the years. We now invite Shane and Jacob to come forward to receive their commemorative Milken Educator obelisks and to share a few words with members of the board as well. I know these were Interim Commissioner Kenny's first two, first two school visits and first two celebrations, and I know she had a great time, and I didn't know if she wanted to share a few words about that. I know it was very exciting.
We've already talked about the excitement that we shared with these two excellent teachers at the board meeting already, so I'm just going to turn it over to them for a few remarks.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, well, I'm Shane Baker from Jennings Creek Elementary, and you all have honored me greatly today by inviting me here to receive this award and to be able to celebrate with my family, so thank you again for that. I was shocked to find that I am the first Milken Educator Award recipient in my district with all the great teachers and educators that I have entered the workforce with, that in this profession, I consider my mentors and my betters, but to be recognized before them and to have them be able to stand and cheer for me is greatly humbling, as well as just knowing that I'm seeing a little fruits of my labor. So I know as a sixth-year teacher, I am not even at my peak yet, so I will continue to strive forward, not to re-earn this award that I'm being given, but to continue to push our profession forward to better not only my school, my district, but our state and our country as a whole. So thank you again.
I'll echo Shane's words and thank you to the board for inviting us, and it's an honor to be here. Words can't express how humble and honored I am to receive the Milken Educator Award. The recognition assembly is a moment that I will never forget and cannot so believe that it happened. I know that there are so many teachers that are deserving of this recognition, and I'm humbled to receive this honor. The outpouring of support from friends, family, colleagues, and students has been unbelievable, and I am thankful for every single text, email, or message. They all mean so much. I do want to thank a few people, you know, I forgot, on the day of the ceremony, it's such a whirlwind, you forget to thank people, so I wrote some folks down. But first, I want to thank my family. My wife, Lindsay, is the most supportive wife in the world, and Collins is my biggest cheerleader and fan. I hope that she always thinks that hanging out in my classroom is as cool as she does right now. Being the spouse or a child of an agriculture teacher can be difficult. There are a ton of late nights and weeks alone during the summer, and Lindsay is a rock of our family and has supported my career and my students like no other. Also want to thank my parents who are in attendance today, John and Colleen Ball, for instilling the importance of education in my family. I appreciate your support of me back in FFA High School, which has led to my career today. I would not be where I am today without role models like them. I also want to thank Fayette County Public Schools. It is a blessing to be a small part of such a large district that values teachers, career and technical education, and students. Fayette County Public Schools and Carter G. Woodson Academy are amazing places to work, and I've never felt more support or been provided with more resources to positively impact students. It's an exciting time to be a part of Team Fayette County and what our students are accomplishing. I want to thank every district leader, Ms. Cozart, my principal, Dr. Catherine Van Ader, the principal at Locust Trace, and Tommy Johnson, our assistant principal, who's in attendance with me today. They have supported the scholars at Carter G. Woodson Academy to be successful at the highest level. I also want to thank every other teacher and colleague that I've worked with and every other agriculture teacher I've worked with over my career. Every accomplishment I have has involved the support of administrators and fellow teachers. Being an agriculture teacher is never a one-person job. Agriculture teachers collaborate at the school, regional, state, and national level, each and every day, and I know that this could be any other agriculture teacher accepting this recognition today. I may be biased, but I truly believe that agriculture and CTE teachers are some of the hardest-working individuals in schools across the Commonwealth. I'm just fortunate enough to have been at the right place at the right time to be noticed and selected for this honor. Finally, I want to thank every student and scholar that I've had the opportunity to teach over the past 13 years. This is a recognition of your effort and accomplishments as much as it is of mine, especially the scholars at Carter G. Woodson Academy. You've stepped out of your comfort zone and embraced agriculture to make our program reflective of your values and your vision. As I say all the time, I wish I could take credit for all the amazing things that my scholars do, but I can't. Just please keep it up and keep making me look good. For those of us who work with the youth, we know the future of agriculture is bright. The scholars at Carter G. Woodson Academy change the world each and every day. You are breaking stereotypes and you are knocking down doors. You are making more of an impact in agriculture than you can even realize, and I'm honored to get to work with you each and every day. Receiving this award is just the beginning. I'm more motivated than ever to keep working with students to ensure the future of agriculture and education is more representative of the population of our nation's two most important industries. I cannot wait to join the Milken Educators Network with Shane and to use this platform to advocate for educators, students, and agriculture across our country. I'm humbled and truly blessed. Thank you all.
We just, on behalf of the Kentucky Department of Education, we are very proud of you all, and we also want to again issue our thank you to the Milken Family Foundation for this wonderful support of our teachers, and we'll be really excited to see you all back next year, hopefully.
Please enjoy the recognition. It is more than well-earned, but I can sense in both of you the commitment to the work and to the students, to the profession, and to our community, and it is just joyously, joyously recognized and appreciated. So please, look forward to seeing you have your pictures made and celebrating with you. Let's have one more.
Enjoy the lunch.
And some lunch. Joining us for lunch. I almost forgot about that. Let's not forget about lunch. Thank you so much for being here. Let's have one more round of applause. Now, let, I appreciate a motion to adjourn. All right, is there a second? I will call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if you oppose, don't say anything. We are now adjourned. Thank you so much.